It was definitely explosive.
Hi, everybody's doing this AI thing because they get, they look.
You know what I regret? I regret not bringing my headset from home. I was gonna do it this morning and my six AM brain forgot.
I have one in my office.
I have my own too, um, but it's USB.
Oh, you did?
Well, cause I was gonna, yeah, just like, uh, cause I was gonna monitor it from my phone.
Okay, why are you monitoring up here?
It's cool. I'm on YouTube right now, so. Okay, so, so, uh, we're basically in the real setup right now. If I can get an echo, I'll create my mic back up to the bass. Yeah, I'm gonna see if I can.
Mics at max, trying to create an echo in my mic. Hello, hello, Hakuna Matata. It means no worries. All the rest of your days. See, I don't hear myself. I, I'm pretty certain it has to be on their end at this point.
Or online, they can have two phones.
Trying to get into Zoom on my phone really quick, one sec. Alright, Michael, we are in Zoom right now. It's loud from the mics in here, which is good.
Okay. I am talking again. And I still did not hear myself, even with the mic at max and yelling into my phone, like I'm an angry, angry Bob. Is that the male Karen? The Bob the male Karen? I'm an angry Bob.
I believe that's Keith.
Oh, Keith, okay.
Well, I don't hear the echo.
Your manager.
I'm in the call on my phone. I don't hear an echo. I wanna try something really fast though, just to see if I could try to reproduce it. Alright, give her the old mic test one, two.
Mic test, one, two. Pick me to your manager.
Hmm.
Nope.
Didn't cause it. Okay, I guess we'll just have to, we'll have to play it. Cause this is as real as it gets right here. I don't hear the echo. When you talk, I don't hear the echo on my phone. Um, I don't hear the echo on my phone when I talk from here, from the house.
The only other thing besides it being on the user end is I know sometimes the business committee will join up on theirs. Uh, on their chat, they may accidentally be unmuting themselves.
But I don't think we can do that, cause I disable people, uh, being able to unmute themselves. But what could happen.
Could be the, the next thing.
What could happen is if they're playing audio, it could pick it up from the bench mic.
Oh, that's true, yeah, cause they're, especially some of them will have open mics.
Well, in Zoom does that dumb thing on mobile, which drives me nuts, where on at least the mobile version, you can't truly turn it all the way down. It'll only let you turn it down all the way to like ten percent and no farther. Which is dumb. Uh, I was gonna, hold on, I can test this. I was just gonna switch scenes to the presentation to make sure we still had audio. So, I can hear myself. Whoa, hold on, test one, two? Yep, I can hear myself well, and you can see the presentation. Okay. Um, looks pretty good. Hold on, let me try housings. Let me try that. Okay, that looks good. And what if I? Go over here? And start the presentation? Oh yeah, you can read that one well, somewhat. You can't really read the pictures that well on mobile.
Can you read that? Cause I can't.
Not very well, and I can't.
I can't read it either on my phone hardly. It looks crystal clear on the monitor, but it's just, it's huge. What about that? Can you read like your columns there on the inside kind of?
Yeah, kind of.
It's just a little blurry. Can't fix that though.
Well, it's not horrible though.
However. I don't have the house. Isn't there another one up there? What was the one that they were showing there up there earlier?
This one?
We don't have that one.
You don't have, who cares what one years?
Oh, no, we, hold on, I think I do. I think Adam said it's in Firefox or whatever. The press down, I think it'll be next. Oh, I split the thing.
All of those, they should be on one file.
Go on, yeah, we're good, I found it. However, I'm gonna have to have somebody. We'll have to have. We tried the Zoom version up there and it looked really bad, so we were gonna do it natively on that and just split at the same time.
Mush, mush. Mush, mush. That's what it should do though, if they're having that issue though.
Right, right. So, I'm gonna have this one. Oh, so I'm gonna go back to. Okay, I have all this. But I'm gonna have to keep this here with me and somebody's gonna have to, uh, throw in this recording. Tell me, do you know if the V C is supposed to present this one?
What?
This one?
Eric.
Eric is. Oh, I thought he said he was talking, does he know that?
[laughing]
He said it. Nice.
So it should be that, two Eric slides and then the agenda.
It's there.
It's there, just scroll, scroll.
Where's the clicker?
Scroll, yeah, there.
Right here, okay.
And that's who's presenting.
Oh, oh, yes, and I'm like, it's there, I, I've just rechecked it. So, okay, would you and me only? Oh, well, I mean, I have a part-time boss and I have a part-time job.
John's waiting to print out things, we might have a bunch tomorrow, one season, but.
Joe coming?
Huh?
Joe coming?
Yeah, John's waiting to. Yeah, it should be forty-nine slides.
I, I think there is, I've got it on both sides.
That thing I put, that thing took years off my life.
I bet it did. We tried, we tried to just like, basically share it through Zoom right up here, but Zoom's compression makes it all blurry. So what we did was we just separated them and put the files like natively right there, so that way.
Yeah, I worried about that, but Eric sent that to me, I couldn't extract the numbers of the spreadsheet.
Right, it's all one image, not. It's okay. Well, I think it's Zoom's compression just making it fuzzy, so it looks good when you don't, when you're not viewing it on Zoom. But.
What about YouTube?
Actually, that's not setting it to the same compression, it would probably look pretty good.
I will.
Yeah, cause YouTube doesn't compress it hardly at all.
So let's get past YouTube.
Right.
And then we'll, then I'll leave copies of this, um, slideshow together that we can get out to. We'll, we'll, we'll.
Yeah.
To our website. Is this thing really gonna get over in eight?
Absolutely not. Not a chance, not a chance.
So I have like forty-nine slides?
I'm gonna say nine. At the low end, nine low end. And at that point, it's gonna be when everybody gets tired and wants to go home.
That's where they're like, let's get pizza, go, no, let's not feed these people, like, they, they don't need to.
Yeah, they don't need to stay here long.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we don't need to, uh, you know.
I, I'm gonna do fourteen, I'm thinking a little probably. Last till ten and then someone in the V C will be like this.
The church. Which is gonna suck because tomorrow at eight AM, I'm gonna feel like death.
I'm going on this subject, it's always forty minutes talking about the church situation.
Yeah, even though it doesn't.
I don't think we found out.
Uh, we're not supposed to, that's not what this is about, but if they wanna talk about it, who's gonna stop them?
Do we get the, do we get the water thing sprayed? Candy canisters sprayed by.
That's why we're not, that's why we're here.
I didn't know what kind of announcer, and she was the first person to follow the other morning, the security guard.
Really? With a security guard?
She is a security guard announcer.
She is? No shot.
It's a little weird, I don't believe you.
I have some questions.
It's not the first thing I.
What did she do, call the bigger security guards? I literally.
Did she just talk shit just to, to let it stop?
That might be pretty effective. Talk it down, you know, just be little than the entire time, and be grateful for the whatever clothing choice they wore. Or whatever, actually, probably what happens, whatever ethnicity they are. I was gonna say, gee, I think she called Jamie a white bitch. Whenever Jamie was on camera.
I wish you called me.
Or who knows? I got more of it.
Look, she'd be the tough person, I just felt swamped, yeah. She'd say something shady and you had to be like. Go like this the other way, you could get through here.
Joseph kinda got her, I thought that was kinda funny. She was just kind of like, not being constructive at all, like tearing everybody else down, like you don't do shit, yada, yada, yada. Joseph was just kinda saying their side, like, it was like. So I think we were there once she, it was like, so what I heard was you wanna volunteer for a committee, like, and, and make yourself useful, and she was like.
Yeah.
Did that?
Huh?
Yeah.
I think it kinda like. It rarely do I see anything rough in the wrong way, like, publicly, like the Joe Burrow and shit.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Yeah.
He also made up that splits her over his teeth.
No. Stop.
I was telling you, man, like a spray bomb, like a cat, a roll of newspaper would go.
You wanna act like a child, creature like a child.
Not even like a child, like an animal.
Okay, so we tested it, um.
I was joking with the boss to play mics, like, we're just gonna go back to the old, old traditional.
Talking stage.
Right, the talking stage? Or the stage, take a stage to the mic, like, this is a talking stage.
But yeah.
So, are we just going to bomb food from here, is somebody gonna go do a run? We have a forty-five minutes.
The sound that's at that, we can get, someone brings stuff to us. Who said that we're gonna actually get us?
Nobody.
No one. No.
That's kinda why we're here.
Cause where the low is on that whole bowl. It's even over this pizza.
I mean, I'm down, just, I'll eat like five muffins and call it nine, uh, part of that.
This job's gonna be stressed diarrhea today, so. Good job. Make your calories up.
Oh, I forgot to ask you, I'm due, it's the end of this holiday place. I need to get my stuff and it's scotch or whiskey, Christmas.
You like scotch or whiskey?
Yeah, I get some questions.
What do you know what that whiskey likes?
No, that's the problem.
I'm trying to hunt down some blends, if you guys see any.
I keep my, I tend to go to that.
I feel bad, I feel bad for desecrating this though, because there's like, nobody's taking anything yet, I wanna just. The problem is, I'm gonna eat like four of these.
First time forever, they go for it, man.
But there's not enough for everybody, like, this is gonna go so fast.
That's the point.
Ah, that sucks. Alright, I'll go ninety subway, but this is all we get.
You're gonna go to?
Subway.
This isn't enough, like, we're, we're gonna be out of that so fast.
That's the point, we don't wanna stay here.
I've been using this for the eight AM, they haven't.
Over there, yo, you. It's funny, folks listening to me, cause we have a bourbon scotch.
Showing you after thousands.
Plus a fifteen-year-old happy man. Hey, you, you bring us dinner?
No, I didn't even.
You bring us roll of newspaper and a spray bottle for people to miss the table?
Oh.
I don't have a hat, if I have a hat, that's a long time.
Where are you going?
Maybe subway.
I didn't even have time to think about that, actually. I figured we'd do all this, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Nice. Who does this? Who outdid themselves, so they're gonna be the go-to person.
That's gonna go fast, I have a feeling.
That's the point.
That's gonna go fast.
That's alright.
Hey, Steve, I emailed you the, the receipt.
See, okay.
Now, can I charge you for a mileage?
Was it your vehicle?
Yeah?
Yeah.
I'll send it your way tomorrow. From downstream to Sam's Club, from Sam's Club to. Hey, that's a twenty dollar.
Can you bring me a large cup?
I'll, I'll, I'll pay you.
Well, I'm gonna just put it all in my cart.
I'll, I'll pay you.
Large cup.
Hey, Steve, I haven't seen Carrie. Carrie? She's gonna be here, I got her there.
The forty-nine slides are on that desk, that's what I'm gonna put.
Oh, no, the coconut.
How bad is this gonna go tonight?
That far is a little bit, right? That means.
This whole month's been a little bit. Yeah, that means that we're.
Everyday around here, it's a woman.
B L T.
B L T.
B L T, pretty simple, lettuce, on like bread.
I'm just gonna give it. This one's.
Uh, that can be there. Yeah, B L T lettuce on a.
I don't know, first off.
You want a ride on that, whatever. You know, we're on a wrap. So, yeah, the same try.
B L T wrap.
Yeah, spinach. And then just lettuce, tomato, and chipotle.
You want that chipotle mayo on it?
Yeah. Alright, let me start doing the whole string thing. I feel that it's gonna be a thing.
I will be, I'm gonna try to be quick.
I'll load it online?
Yeah, I'll load it online, alright. And I, it's, it's pointless, I, I can feel it already in my head.
I know, you can tell we said sixty-five, I see, maybe, sixty-eight cheers.
We're gonna have a record crowd or a very low.
I know. There's seventy there, cause there's sixty-eight cheers.
Like I have awards, I have. There's a lot of Christmas play.
We're gonna have a show, mine's gonna be full, I have.
But the more people is, the more likely we're gonna be late, so.
Part two, damn it. They get closer, right?
Maybe it's the dick ones?
Yes. Like he would tell me he was going on, I almost went.
What's your game last one?
Uh, yes, now it turned off, you know, it was three days, three, sixteen.
I almost didn't say that anymore, but I'm gonna watch.
It's movie last. I got tired, I'm like, fuck. And then woke up to it with them when it's.
It's crazy.
Three minutes. Three, they have a seven.
Good, uh. Good sound quality. It's been so crazy, I need to have Jeff read you out two minutes, basically.
You didn't listen to any.
Thank you enough for mixing. I did forward that so everyone would.
Well, we're just wondering what we're doing with our lives, cause we gotta listen full by or we'll be on the road to Harrison. You wanna go with us?
Um, no.
That was the perfect answer.
Come on, it'd be good for you.
Cause that's what the days I wanna use for ketchup, like ketchup.
Well, it's quiet.
Uh huh, uh huh.
Calm before storm. Man, you're on first, you get, get done, I don't know with.
I am.
Yeah, you are, I don't know, you went in that.
I did sign up for it. I did not sign up for it.
I did not sign up for any of this.
Just letting everybody know. I did not sign up.
I got the, uh.
Uh, you gotta click her, it's been simple.
Do we have any tables left in there?
Do we have any tables left in there?
No.
Okay, they're fine then.
I don't think so, but go double check, cause there may be a short one.
There's a few left in there.
Is there? Cause we were hunting time to make everything even, and I knew this, there was a short one, so. Oh, that one?
Uh huh.
Doesn't have a walk, thanks, so that's why they didn't use a blue one, I do know that.
Oh, okay, that's good for me. Yeah, exactly. I'm not gonna put you thinking more on this one, I hope. I think.
And we've already, we lost the opportunity like nineteen, we could have purchased a thousand dollars, like, what, you wanna take that?
Yeah, the agenda is right there.
He drinks a drink. Oh.
I left weed, she put it in. That was what my paper is.
Yeah.
Hey, what you get, you done it over?
Hey, I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm, it's not bothering me more than that.
Okay, how can we, Eric putting this in doesn't mean it creates second, these are already that real.
I think that's what it's. It's what.
I pulled mine off.
I sent it, I put it in the very beginning, then the agenda. I think by trying to make things less confusing, they're making me a way more.
My head's after dark. What am I doing here?
Did you say you've got an hour ago?
Yeah, cause I just wanted to see it.
I'm sure that's a pretty light reading too.
We're gonna fix it.
That's a number like, highlight, speak to me triple times about. That's like, see how much I can retain.
So we put yours at the very beginning.
Yeah.
My source ever married, said.
You what?
I know it.
Said my source ever married, said.
Since you add, I mean, like, added that.
You what? Oh, yeah, they.
I'm here to recap. I'm just on time, I'm surprised. I feel a little bit better, but come on in. Get your best seat. Oh no, you're gonna, you're gonna get the part, sister. I mean, I should just remember that. We might, we could do that here. I don't know, my wedding over what's. I'll do whatever you want, I'll do it.
She's got, she's got four and a half pages.
If I send a business committee meeting, uh, the group, do you have any sort of?
No, I don't. I don't know.
Good, thank you.
I don't.
Yes, I know that there's a live student.
I'm so busy trying to keep up with my son, who's like.
Yeah, well, I just get tickled, because I'm always behind you. Yeah, wait, he's still through law. I'm good. Oh, why? Why are you not going back to your homework? Okay, all right, good. Yeah, just might be in trouble now. He wasn't home till. About the same time as I said you'd call him or. Oh, true you are, you just tell your son, you got it figured out.
I, I, I listened to everybody, and it's probably got from there. I'm worried it's gonna, uh, block you some again, kill fire.
Hey, Nina. I don't know, we've been there, it was a lot of yeah, I don't think I was. Nice to meet you. I think so, yeah. Yep, so then the house that happened, yeah. Oh, yeah, thirty two days. I should have brought that. That's the first, was five o'clock, and I started, you know, we're here having a week. I probably don't have any left when I get home. I'm not sure we will. That's okay, higher family that. She's sat on a beach right now.
No, you're gonna.
They wanted me to go like. He didn't, he wouldn't care, he would never share anything with his partner, because I felt like I probably need to work with my sister. Black parking stalls. Oh.
Fruit, vegetables. I knew you were gonna like this. Okay, continue. Quickly not grateful.
That's what. Oh.
Healthy.
No, I'll show an action.
We good, sir? Three of them.
Probably doesn't answer.
Looks like me with, uh, Jolly Rancher, I think it's. Sour ones.
I'm feeling good, how are you? Hi, Shorty.
Are you? So they just.
Yeah.
There's no, there was no meat. I asked.
Nice to meet you, I'm a virtual key.
Glad to meet you. That's my friend, my family, when you come, but sickness has got.
I'll do the translation, Mr. Trans. It says meat and cheese. I've noticed cheese on bread.
She was wanting to spread the joint.
I seen her, I seen her.
If she's not there, or she's.
Plop, plop. Yeah, it is. No, no, we're good. I think that's good.
Work with me, work with me. So just want me to give you any?
It's like an angel.
This is an obstacle, this is like an obstacle course. So it's set wherever we want to sit.
Then, then, then maybe you won't be, you could be still.
I ain't going in the circle, I'm trapped. I ain't going to get, I don't want to have to call under music apply. This is the back to the table, and then we've got.
Yep, good, yeah. I know, I'm like. Hey, I heard Christmas. It's like that. A car. Ran out of runs. Honey, God.
Nice to meet you, nice to meet you. Uh, I'm not sure what I'm gonna do here, I didn't get to make it this past year, my party's actually in Blackwood. So I'm gonna have a, like a big birthday celebration. I think maybe a little closer to you. I don't know.
Hey, that's a. That's a good, I know.
I am not. No, they moved now, yeah, Vicki, which is my dad's sister. She, especially they got out. She works, that's her son, she's working out. They're a, they're a huge, like they rap, like, you know, like digital, like TV, TV's that collect. You see in Vegas, you know, it's like. She goes, she goes down, like, big, like. You, uh, you want to say, whoever he is, he works.
Uh, whenever, you can go to the restroom in a minute. We need to talk about that after this.
How are you, sir?
You doing good, yourself?
Doing good, hanging in.
Doing good. Hanging in.
You still at the equipment side? Oh, are you?
Yeah, it looked, it looked fine. I got extra if we needed going low, so. When you look at the monitor, you can. Testing, testing.
Testing one, two. If we could have everybody find their seats, please. And we'll go ahead and get started. Uh, Zoom all good? All right. Thank you. So I'd like to welcome everybody to this special town hall meeting called by the Quapaw Nation. It's good to see everybody here in attendance, in person, as well as those who have been able to log on to the Zoom link. Uh, we're hoping it's going to be a lively discussion, uh, full of ideas, just a few, uh, housekeeping notes. Uh, this is pretty, uh, informal, so to speak. Uh, I don't really feel a need to just inject Robert's Rules of Order all over the place because we do that once a month. Uh, this is more of a, like a true, true to form town hall grassroots meeting over, uh, ideas uh, that we could, uh, potentially implement, uh, for the remaining ARPA funds. And, uh, we have nearly $10 million in funds, uh, that have yet to be, uh, spent. And really the purpose is to get, uh, feedback, input, and hopefully, you know, come up with the best idea to get the best bang for our buck, so to speak. So, uh, welcome everyone and, um, I feel like we need to pray. So if you could bear with me, please, uh, remove your hats and, uh, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Entate wakonda wakonda yinke. Ganege watsiko mi humpade. Wewina watsiko mi. Dali humpade. Uda humpade. Ganege ogapa nikashi. Dakwali yajinkaji. Wakpani ogapa nikashi. Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you that we could come together to meet and discuss, uh, the future of our tribe. Uh, be with us as we go throughout this process this evening and, uh, fill our hearts and minds, uh, with your Spirit, Father. And, uh, all these things I ask in your son's Jesus Christ's name, I pray. Amen. Ganege. Uh, so as part of my opening remarks, it was, uh, requested of me since our last business committee meeting. There's been a couple of things, um, take place. Uh, one being the resignation of Zach Turley as the business committee member. He is effectively resigned. And then two, uh, we have a Christmas, uh, children's party on December 16th. And details to follow, uh, but it'll be taking place at the Coleman Theater. And I believe the festivities start at 5:30. Supper, Santa Claus, and then we're going to be watching a movie. So, uh, everyone is welcome to come out and, uh, take, take part in the festivities. And then of course, the day after, we're going to have the elders' Christmas party at Downstream. So, uh, should be, should be a fun-filled weekend, uh, full of family and gifts, hopefully Santa Claus coming and everybody in good spirits, but, um, I believe those were the two announcements we wanted to cover. What else we got? Okay, uh, I was told that there are a significant amount of, uh, angels on the blessing tree. Uh, that is over at the museum. Uh, so if anyone wants to participate in that, uh, angel tree, um, blessing tree, excuse me. The angels are still available on the blessing tree, so, uh, don't forget to, don't forget to go by there. Anything else? Open house, December 11? Open house, December 11th at the museum, starting at? One o'clock, one o'clock. One o'clock till four o'clock. Okay. Anything else? I think that's about it. No? There's more? Yes, sir. December 16th. Oh, and, uh, for those of you that don't know, there, I think there's like a petition circulating around, uh, calling for everybody to have a good Christmas, Merry Christmas. I started it a couple, a couple of days ago. If you haven't got it, it's coming your way. Um, so the purpose of this meeting, as I said in my opening remarks, is to talk about, uh, what we can do, where we want to go, and how we want to spend this remaining, uh, ARPA funds. And so, um, as it is such an important, uh, initiative that, that we are endeavoring on, uh, I would like the Secretary Treasurer, Ms. Weena Supranaw, to give her remarks and kind of give us an update on, uh, what's been happening and, and where we're going, I guess. So, Weena, thank you.
Thank you. So I think it was in 2021, there was a similar forum conducted. At that time, and it was, we had the ARPA money or it was soon to, to become available. And at that time, we had preliminary guidelines, okay? That town hall's purpose was to, similar to this, to collect feedback, get ideas about some of the, uh, desired uses for that money. A lot of the really great ideas came up at that time, and as we go through this evening's discussion, you may be wondering, well, wait a minute, what happened to all those ideas? If you recall, many of them were along the lines of assisted living, nursing home, rehabilitation, inpatient, uh, treatment, things of that nature, all fantastic ideas. The unfortunate truth is when the final guidelines came out, anything that looked like congregate housing, such as a nursing home, assisted living, things of that nature, did not comply with the guidelines. Okay, so that's why you don't, you know, you won't see any progress when it comes to those things. That doesn't mean they're not good ideas. They're fantastic ideas that we need to really pursue. And so as, you know, we go through this evening's agenda, just keep in mind, all ideas are good ideas. We're just trying to stay focused on what is allowable in terms of the ARPA spending. So as we have the discussion, I'm going to be logging any, you know, obviously we've got some presenters who have put forth their ideas and really looking forward to, to hearing that. They're going to take just a couple of minutes apiece, five to 10 minutes. Um, and then at that point, obviously, we'll have an opportunity for questions as well as other ideas from tribal members. Um, you know, let's not worry so much about whether it complies with the guidelines, but I want to make sure that we've got a comprehensive list. A tribal member last Friday put forth a fantastic idea, I thought Vicki Braden, and, oh, to do basically a more formal survey. So what we'll do is collect those ideas and we'll utilize social media as well as other means to really get a pulse on not just maybe the most vocal voices in the room, but a very broad pulse from a broad range of tribal members to make sure that we're committing and spending these dollars in the most effective way possible. That's, that's really consistent with tribal members' input. Okay?
Thank you, Weena. Uh, so without further ado, can we go ahead and, uh, move down the, uh, slide? Move down the deck. Okay. So if you'll see there, uh, we had a little over 52 million, uh, that the tribe received. And out of that 52 million, after, uh, direct COVID relief payments to individual tribal members, uh, our revenue loss replacement, uh, back to the tribal government, our technology expenses, uh, our pension plan contribution for Department of Public Safety, the premium pay for our employees on the tribal government side, uh, our internship program, and then all of the technical assistance, uh, that was spent to get those programs uh, situated and, and, uh, allocated. We have, um, incurred, you know, a little over 42 million. So it's just shy of, uh, you know, roughly 10 million remaining balance. Uh, but we wanted to, to show that, uh, to show, you know, where the money went and what we've been spending it on. Uh, next slide, please. And, um, if, if the, if it comes up today, like, uh, there, there's even more examples of what we spent our CARIS Act, uh, money on. So before ARPA, the 52 million, we actually had a $13 million injection from the federal government, Department of Treasury. And, uh, that is a breakdown of what we spent, uh, those monies on. We had, uh, a, a short, uh, amount of time, uh, to allocate those funds and get those out the door. And so that's a rough breakdown of what those monies were spent for. And I want to thank, uh, Eric, CFO, along with his accounting staff, uh, for, for doing that and executing that. Absolutely, absolutely. That'll be to follow. Uh, we want to be able to put that information out there to every, every person who, who wants to look at that. It's already out there. Perfect. Thank you. Um, so now let's get into the agenda here. And, uh, first up, uh, we have a duo, if I'm not mistaken. Rough and tumble duo, uh, by the name of Trenton and Mitch. And they're going to come up here to talk about land acquisition and tilable land. And you can come up here, you can stand right there. It's up to you, fellas.
Excuse me. Um, as the chairman said, I'm Trenton Stand. I'm the director of the Realty Department. Um, in case anybody didn't know, I've, uh, we put some, got together some information just on a, on the. I've, uh, we put some, got together some information just on a, on the idea of a possible land purchase. There's roughly a single family-owned piece of property that's, covers about seven hundred and eighty-eight acres. It's in our western edge of our jurisdiction. Um, if this, you know, comes to be, we basically just put together, um, information from Mitch's side handling the actual row crop, uh, process of the cattle operation. Okay, there you go. There's some information on it. Um, so basically, the, I only got the one. The, uh, the, right now, the tribe only owns a hundred percent ownership of a hundred and seventy-two acres that's in row crop. There's an additional two thousand four hundred that's, uh, leased land. So on top of your expenses that fertilizer, things like that, that comes into farming, um, there's a lease payment on that additional two thousand acres that Mitch has to, uh, take care of annually that eats into the profit. So, the, um, seven hundred and eighty-eight acres, basically, that increases his operation as a whole by thirty percent and the ownership that's a hundred percent owned by the tribe by, you know, four hundred and fifty-five percent. But, um, basically, as this property is today, how it's owned by the family, it makes them money without them having to do any legwork to it. Um, they have a farmer that farms it just as Mitch has contractors do the work for them. So, you see on there that, you know, I put, you know, roughly, there's a hundred thousand plus, or a hundred dollars plus per acre profit. Um, of course, pending, this past year kinda hurt with the drought and everything. That's just farming. But, um, that number, not having the lease payment in on top of it, would be significantly, or, you know, a good amount higher than that hundred dollars per acre. But that's a sa- safe number. And then to be able to just compute here and just layman talks is, you know, you're gonna get, you know, nearly a hundred thousand dollars, you know, off that a year. So, the property just by itself out there, not changing any process, is you're gonna roughly ballpark, you know, every year, you're gonna get a hundred thousand dollars. So, that property, property would pay for itself thirty-three years, um, and they don't make any more land. So at the bottom, um, I just had, you know, something else to consider. It's the price of property. Well, in the past, just a couple of years, the pa- the price per acre, um, to buy any land is just skyrocketing right now. Um, I don't know if anybody's tried to buy a home, or, I mean, homes, ag land, it's all affected the same way. Um, this, you know, property a few years ago could have been acquired for less than what it's gonna take now. Um, but that's everywhere. So that was kinda what we had, um, put together as an option idea for you guys to come all around and, and talk about. Did you have anything you wanted to add? It's on the, it's on the far western, um, side, um, which the majority of it is in our reservation boundary. Um, part of it, um, adjoins our western edge and is, uh, slightly outside, but the majority of it's inside. Yes. Well, that would just go into, uh, part of the operation and services that Mitch provides for the tribe as a whole. I would, you know, relay that back to the business committee to further expand, but that's a.
Initially, I, I'm not sure how to answer that, but right now, we'll, we'll be adding seven hundred and eighty-eight acres to our jurisdiction. That's gonna be available for the tribe to do whatever they want with in the years to come. If they wanna build new homes, if they wanna build new businesses, whatever they wanna do with that land, it's gonna be available to the tribe at the tribe's expense, so.
That's, yeah.
If they were in the jurisdiction. So, I don't know how to answer that either. That's a really good question. It, it, I don't know that it would. If they were, if they ever wanted to work in the ag industry, if they ever wanted to come back home, or if they had a relative down the road that wanted to come back home and work for the ag industry, they could. Um, there, there's ways. I don't, that's a really good question.
Do we have any idea of what the prof- what profits they're making now off of this land?
I don't, I don't have.
And I know you don't, you can't give me an estimate, but from your experience of ballpark, is it just the hundred dollars an acre?
So that hundred dollars an acre is what we are around the Quapal Cattle Company on a two-thirds and a third share crop basis. That's basically without us touching the ground at all. And that's revenue, right? So it's the whole profit. So, the revenue side's a lot higher. Uh, but, so for speaking for the Darnell Brothers, you know, I don't know that, I don't know who or what their share is, or how their share crop agreement's set up. I don't know anything about their base acres, what they've planted in the past, their historical data.
So then let me get this straight. You're asking us to give you three point, three million dollars, and you can only tell me, well, we make about a hundred dollars doing nothing?
Eight, roughly eighty thousand a year.
So, I'm just curious to see, I granted, land is not being made anymore, and you mentioned putting houses on it, but if this is ag land, then why would we wanna put houses on it?
Well, I don't, cuz I'm an ag, cuz I agree with you.
I get that, but just from my standpoint of, of just this little bit of information, that's a, and I, I get that it's ag land, I get that it's profitable, but if you don't have any more information and it's not benefiting every tribal member.
Right, and this, this was just an idea to propose tonight to get the ball rolling about things. Not in any way is this, and the business committee, you know, hasn't decided on any one thing, to my knowledge, but, go ahead, Ben.
I think, uh, you guys are on to something, you know, cuz they're not making more land. I think a feasibility study should be, should be conducted with this idea. I think it's a great idea. The, the, with the tribe acquiring any land in general is a great thing. Um, my question is, so I understand Mitch's standpoint from the ag agricultural side, having worked for QCC, and I'm aware of the, uh, the path of self-sustainability within the tribe with the food program that Michelle Bowden and Mitch both work on. However, you know, you gotta look at, uh, some different avenue, avenues. Is this property that you are suggesting as, as the purchase, does it have any potential for, um, commercial development? Is there any potential there for commercial development on this property? Is it, and, and you make a reference to reservation boundaries. Do we have legal reservation boundaries established within this state? And if so, where are these boundaries? Can you give me longitude and latitude, latitude of this reservation status that everybody's making references to?
Right, that, that's a good question, Ben. And just, uh, over the past few months, I have met with a representative from the Bureau of Land Management. And through the Miami Nation, they have been working on our southern, uh, jurisdictional line between us and them, um, or the Miami's and the Peoria's boundary. And now is actually a good time and is on my list for my meetings with the business committee to, um, recommend right now BLM defining by a actual description outside of the original one that was not as in-depth and hasn't been remarked since, um, eighteen seventy-four, seventy-three. So I've been working with them on that. They have defined our south lines, just recently been researched. But the entire thing, I agree with you a hundred percent, does need to be redone, and those talks have been initiated.
Yeah, I think a platter survey would be the proper way to go about, you know, suggesting this, this land purchase, as well as any other additional land purchase or property development that the tribe undertakes, to make sure that it is within our jurisdiction, that we have these legal boundaries established, you know, to, just for our sovereignty alone. I mean, it's, that's a big deal, but I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I mean, purchasing land, you know, they're not making any more land, so I applaud you guys for that, and I, I think you're on to something.
Thank you. All right, any more questions for us?
Is this the land that's out there, I don't know, by pitcher, where we're cleaning up at currently?
It's west of there.
How far west?
Our western boundary. Um, so you're looking at, what, two miles? Two miles west of basically the YC to plant, yeah.
So there's chat in those areas, correct?
Not on these.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it, gentlemen. Uh, just to kind of add on to that, I guess, as part of that discussion, um, you know, a possibility for that land, of course, we have ag folks, folks that would wanna keep it ag. And then you talk about, if we didn't do that, what the commercial potential is, and, and really, how does that benefit, or how does that help, uh, folks outside of our boundary, say, out-of-state folks? And I, I would say, you know, depending on what that, uh, potential idea is or endeavor, uh, just to float an idea. Say, say you have, um, probably the most grant funding out there, uh, in the history of grant funding, specifically with energy. That seems to be the new wave, um, of, of being able to provide good, sustainable energy to tribal communities. And, uh, maybe, maybe an idea could potentially be, uh, to have a solar farm, solar panel farm out there. And then at that point, you're, um, being able, you, you generate power enough to power all the homes within a county or a reservation, tribal and non-tribal alike, uh, and then you're able to pass those cost savings on to all of your individual members, and therefore you lower, um, the, the overhead, uh, that's hitting our general fund budget as a tribal government. And then, in, in doing so, you increase your, your programming dollars and your servicing dollars that can benefit folks that are out of state. So that's just, that's just one scenario, uh, that could potentially be implemented. And I wanted to say that that was kind of included in the, in the discussion initially as well. Uh, something to think about. We'll put a pin in it. And, um, if anybody has anything else they'd like to add, please reach out to us, email us, call us. Um, next up is Jamie McNeely. Oh, I'm sorry. Golly. Missed that one big time. My apologies.
So I'm Jackie Stone. I work in the Housing Department. Um, I'm here on behalf of To- um, Tom Stell. Um, Housing Department is requesting funding for building a minimum of thirteen more homes in the amount of two million dollars. Since we started the new energy-efficient homes, um, people has, um, sorry, not real good at this, um, increased, um, interest in our program. Sure. Unfortunately, we have suspended taking applications for Nahaza program to allow our team to focus on serving the eight families currently waiting on our waiting list. Our ability to serve the tribal members has been severely hindered as the Nahaza program funding has been, oh, thanks, has been dropped, um, severely. FY two twenty-two, we received two hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. In that amount, um, funding, they take out for personal benefits, indirect travel, training, office supplies, and other expenses. Um, let's see. It has been approximately six years since we've had a project that required a rehab versus a new build for Nahaza. With this, um, our funding with, because it's been cut, we're only to build, able to build one house per year. Um, the cost of materials for each home can fluctuate with, uh, supply and demand. At this time, price of the contract for two-bedroom homes is around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and a three-bedroom home is around a hundred and fifty thousand. The number of the house of the bedrooms depends on how many peoples in the home. At this time, we can build a minimum of thirteen three-bedroom homes, or a maximum of sixteen two-bedroom homes with the amount that we are requesting. Um, we would like to use the funds we are requesting to serve the tribal members who have been waiting on the list, and we would like to open the program up um, to more applicants by using the ARPA funds we receive and Nahaza funds, uh, to continue to build new homes. This would make the increase efficiently, serve more tribal members, and be more adequate, um, and continue to, um, go forward in the housing, um, suc- success. Oh, yeah. So these are the new homes we're building. They're SIP structural panels. Um, so, this just gives you some cost-saving, energy efficiency on the home, um, which I'm sure they'll provide the slides later. Um, versus a stick build versus a SIP structural panels is what we moved to. They cut energy, uh, down, so. Anybody have any questions? Okay, Ben. So Nahaza is, if you, they'll re- either rehabilitate, um, your house up to, I believe, fifty thousand dollars. Or if the house is deemed, uh, more than that amount, they will tear down that house and build you, like I said, it depends on the house, how many peoples in your house. If it's a one person, they get a two-bedroom. If it's more, we're only allowed to, uh, build a three-bedroom house. Um, but it's on your land, and you have to own the land or own the house.
Okay, my first question is, where is the proposed location for these thirteen houses that you're wanting to potentially build?
So the houses are based on your, so like people own their houses?
Okay, so it's on their personal?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I answered that. My next question, who does your estimating in your department?
So it's.
Your project estimating or project management?
That would be Tom.
Man, he needs to rethink his numbers. Ideally, these, these, this type of housing that you're suggesting, it's, it's, it's great and all, but you could get so much more bang for your buck. Myself and Mitchell Albright can attest to, he's got a background in construction. I've got a background in construction. You could build a three-bedroom house for roughly seventy thousand dollars, stick frame. Prefab trusses, insulation, drywall, nice flooring, nice countertops.
So these, these houses also cut your energy costs down by sixty percent, so it's ultimately to help the tribal members as well with, you know, energy costs as well.
Sure, and that's, that's all, that's great and well, but, you know, thirteen houses out of two million versus, let's say, let's, let me do the math here real quick. Two hundred, two, is it two million?
Two mil, was it two million?
Yeah, we are doing a lot of the work in-house. So on the last two houses, um, the first house we built in forty-five days from start to finish. The second house was up in thirty-five days from start to finish. That's pouring the slab that was in the dry in three days. Um, shingles was on on day four.
What was that, was that number, was that price range you put in there? Okay, so if you did seventy thousand, seventy thousand dollars on one house, you could get twenty-eight houses out of two million. And if you, and if you're doing that in-house and you're not subbing out anything besides your electrical, plumbing?
We don't sub out electrical, um, we do that in-house as well.
That saves even more money, cuz I'm sure you guys ain't making eighty thousand. That saves even more money, because I'm sure your guys ain't making eighty thousand a year. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm just getting throwing that, that figure out there. If they are making eighty thousand a year, then sign me up, you know? A good carpenter, a good carpenter does, I mean, a good carpenter could frame two hundred feet of wall, two hundred feet of walls in one day, eight hours. And I think, uh, is, I think Kyle Neal, is Kyle Neal still work there?
No, sir.
Well, he was a great carpenter.
He really was, yes.
He was a great worker, he knew his work, I worked with him for several years. Um, again, I think, I think the, it's a great idea, but it's just, it's not, I don't think it's very feasible for these insulated panels, you know, like, why build thirteen houses when you could potentially build twenty-eight for seventy thousand? Nice homes for seventy thousand, nice homes, from, from the ground up. That's all.
Yeah, we do one house per year now because of the cut in funding. I believe two to three, yeah.
So with, with the, taking that into consideration with the cut of funding in this waiting list, why, why build with, why deal with more and more expensive material to build?
You can build the, the same house for less and more, and more houses. And on what?
Yeah, we've had some discussions.
And more housing options are getting ready to come, so stay tuned. These are all just the multiple, you know, ideas.
Sure, and, and I, I get that, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around it, why settle for thirteen houses when you could potentially build twenty-eight? Yeah, I priced lumber lately, I just had to redo a roof. Price it all, lumber, shingles, insulation, drywall, paint.
Go ahead, Vicky.
Okay, Jackie, uh, you were talking about mixing Nahaza with this, uh, COVID money, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Who's, who do you, because I know HUD has very strict restrictions on how you use their funds. On family size, construction materials, the whole nine yards. Do you lean more towards HUD's restrictions or tribal restrictions?
Well, we'd still use HUD guidelines, uh, well, Nahaza guidelines, because, I mean, we'd still do our environmental reviews and everything else, just like we would on everything else. We wouldn't, I mean, there's no sense of not doing that, I wouldn't think.
Well, I was curious, um, how much money is your Nahaza funds going to kick in besides the additional two million?
So the Nahaza, we get approximately a hundred and, hang on. Or two hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars we got this year. But then you have to take out all the indirect, um, personal, um, uh, benefits, personnel, indirect costs, um, and supplies, you know, all that comes out of the grant as well.
Okay, uh.
Right. Not everybody's just a portion of.
So is HUD not, no longer doing acquisitions?
I have no idea on that question. I can ask Jeannie or Tom and get back with you, but I don't know that. Okay, anybody else? Nope, okay, moving on.
Thank you, Jackie. Uh, next up to talk about infrastructure, uh, Brian Ross with the Grants Department.
All right, I'm Brian Ross, I'm the director of the Grants Department. We had a project a couple of years ago, if you want to go to the next slide. I don't know where the clicker is. We, I'm sorry. Is there a question? Okay, sorry. Um, kind of follow up with Jackie on housing. We, uh, were trying to figure out how to continue the Nahaza program since the allocation wasn't enough or it kept declining year after year. And, um, so two or three years ago, we, uh, for the competitive housing programs, they basically want to see, um, the families have some skin in the game, is the best way I can put it. So you, you could go multiple paths on homeownership, which is basically what the Nahaza program's been in the past. And what she was just talking about, the, the type of project they're wanting the, the first two million dollars for. Um, but competitive grants, I can't get those for that type of project. We've got to have some type of leverage. So this program, the only way to get it funded was to have a, a twenty-five percent match. So we were successful, we were able to get two-point-three million dollars to build twenty rental units. Um, I think you all are familiar with the elders housing. Um, the twenty units that we built there was basically the model that we used to write this application. Um, in the meantime, housing costs have been going up, mostly material costs. And, um, so we, we came to the, or housing, um, once they got those twenty filled, they felt like there's a stronger demand for family units. So long story short, instead of building ten duplexes, we, uh, changed the scope of the project to twenty single-family units for, um, well, families. So, uh, basically, probably going to be three-bed, two-bath, typical family-style homes. Um, and then we, we are committed to the seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-dollar match from the original grant. Um, so we're, original budget was a little over three million dollars for twenty houses. Uh, we're almost two years into the project since it was funded. Got about three years left to build those twenty units and get them all occupied with income-eligible families. Same income limits that we have for the Nahaza program. So that, if you're not familiar with it, it, um, changes based on family size. So one person have to make less than about fifty thousand dollars. And it goes on up to like eighty or ninety thousand dollars for a family of eight, so.
Are these rentals then, or are these houses like that HUD housing or industry? Or at some point they will own these houses?
These twenty are rentals for the next fifteen years. Um, at that point, we can convert them to owner-occupied. But we are, based on the HUD project, um, obligated to maintain those as rentals. So they will charge rent and everything like they do the elder housing. Um, so the, like I said, the construction costs have been rising, so. Yeah, that's, uh, QSA and housing, I'm not sure, a question for them. Um, so yeah, to, to complete this project, um, we'd really like somewhere in the ballpark of two million dollars also for this project. Uh, we hope that's more, well, more than enough. Uh, so we have a couple of options here. And so this program, the, we got this through, is the Competitive IHBG project, which is, uh, basically the same. It's the third largest HUD program, I believe, um, that's housing-related. And, um, so they've got quite a bit of money available, but it's very competitive. There were over two thousand applications when we applied for this and they funded twenty-four of us. Um, so we, we really need to follow through and show that we're successful on it because we can apply again once this is complete. And the maximum application now is, um, seven and a half million. So we'll learn, I'm not the, the housing expert as far as construction costs and everything is concerned. But I'm hoping, you know, we can build more than twenty out of this one and can be successful and get as many families in them as we can. And, uh, show some success. So the proposed site for this project's the Ray property. It's, uh, located at the southwest corner of East Fiftieth Road and South Six-Twenty Road. Um, so fifties, the top, Future Farmer Road. Um, the far-right side, um, is the EPA remediation, so we can't build on that land. So basically where I've got the little marker there, that's going to be the, the location of the site. Um, Six-Twenty Road is on, basically off the screen, right off the, to the east of that. The blue area is floodplain, can't build there. Um, so there's, basically we're limited to about a ten-acre patch there in that, that northwest corner. Um, so we've already, uh, purchased the land, environmental review's complete, got to meet all the HUD regulations. And, um, ARPA actually defers to HUDs. So all of the, uh, final rule for ARPA, um, what's allowed by HUDs, allowed by ARPA, so it fits really well together. Um, so we've completed environmental review, we're in the process of engineering design. Uh, so, so far, we've got two options for the subdivision. This one's for the twenty lots, be the minimum that's required for the project to successfully complete it. And then, uh, the second option, they're able to squeeze in about thirty lots on that ten-acre site. So what we could do is develop twenty of those lots with this project. And if there's enough funding available with it, go ahead and build ten more or save those ten additional lots for future development and if we can get another grant application for that. So, um, that's basically it in a nutshell. Happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Um, I just, I just want to back up one bit to Kelly's comment. You said, what was that, square footage cost you, you stated?
A hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten dollars, is that include labor or is that just material?
Uh, that's everything, top to bottom, material and everything.
Material and labor. Okay, so with, with your proposal, you know, at one time, QSA had a very competent, successful, motivated staff. Is QSA involved in this?
I don't believe so, I think housing.
Our housing department, who does the, um, my speech is very annoying. Who does the Nahaza housing? They're going to be taking care of this and they've got several different form plans, so it doesn't look cookie cutter.
And we do, we do have infrastructure costs as well, if we're going to develop this site. Right now it's just Ag land. Um, so I don't believe the cows are on it anymore, but it's, it's ready for development. And that, that streets, sewer water, um, Quapaw City water is on-site, or sewer, rural water. Um, and then we, we've talked about sidewalk, street trees, street lighting, other amenities for that development to try to make it as nice as possible, so. Um, those, those costs have not been determined yet, though. They're still a long process to go through to, to, to decide what design will be.
So my next question is for the Housing Department, and I guess the B C can answer if they want to. How much experience does your department have in property development on this, this scale?
Well, yeah, so we, as far as I'm concerned, I, so I'm the, the project manager for the grant. Um, I'm relying on Tom, the Housing Department, to build the houses. Basically, I, I believe he's proposing the same sit-panel construction that, um, Jackie had just mentioned. And, uh, infrastructure, John Jackson Jr.'s are, um, basically transportation planner. He's going to work with us on hiring contractors for that. And the, the engineers, all of that will be based on engineering design once that's final.
So again, I'm going to go back to my comment regarding QSA. The tribe has a construction management firm. And again, at one point in time, they had qualified individuals that, and actually built the, uh, elder housing addition that we currently have next to the Wellness Center. You know, they handled at one point in time, all, all the design process from architectural to engineering. I mean, to down, down to.
We're actually using the same.
Down to seating and down to seating the grass.
Yeah, we're, we're actually using those same engineers, CJW is on retainer and that's who's designing this subdivision. So I think the goal would be to be as close to that as possible.
So that's a hundred thousand for twenty homes?
That's, yeah, we're just trying to play it safe, make sure we have enough. If we've got enough, hopefully, you know, the numbers work out to where we can build more than twenty. But we, we have to have a minimum of twenty in this project.
So why don't the tribe do a lot of the work itself?
I, I think they, QSA might, might do some of the infrastructure.
I, I could run that whole job right there, the whole dirtwork process of it, if you got to pay enough.
Yeah, that's, that's still.
I've done this stuff for twenty-five years.
That's still to be determined.
You guys, you guys have got every piece of equipment available to do that job.
That's definitely an option, so I, I'm not.
Yes, with QSA, we are aware that in the past we have done that. Um, right now, they're really focused on remediation. Um, we want to get there, we want to get to what you're talking about, we want to be able to have our own construction. We did, and things happened, it fell apart. So right now, we're doing what we can to achieve what we can, but it's definitely one of our goals. Something happened, but we do know that it is a problem and it is on the radar. And I think we all agree with you, we'd love to do it internally, we're just not there. But right now, we're wanting to, uh, achieve some of these projects and we found a method to it. And that's kind of what we're running with until we can get staffed back up and get those skilled workers in here. They focused over to remediation, QSA is right now. And then we've got facilities and we're trying to get our facilities department built back up with our, um, organization, kind of flattening the curve, I'm sorry. Tell them to come apply. Well, we're working on that too. We've already increased our wages across the board and we're getting ready to do more, but have them come apply, that's all we can do. Well, we will look into that. I, I did not know it was that low. And that's why I like this meeting, we get to hear from all of you.
That's, I've worked with many of them doing this kind of stuff. Like your guys' pay is where it starts out, you can't keep somebody if you won't pay.
It's a work in progress, but our eyes are on it, so thank you for that. Anybody else?
Uh, thank you, and showing us the options. I'm wondering, uh, the, the end product of this. Now, in looking at the, the map up there, it shows like the land. Are these to be, um, family units or are they like, uh, a motel or something? Uh, is there going to be any land? I've seen housing in other places. So I'm wondering, what, what's this going to look like?
I skipped through that pretty fast, didn't I? Um, so let me back up here. So those lots, um, where it says one, two, three, four, five, if you can read that, uh, those would be the individual family's land, just like, you know, most of us own our own, or a lot of us own our own single-family homes. So it's just, just, yeah, it's got a front door and a back door, it's just got one family living in the one house. Um, the, the elder housing units, duplexes, they're attached. You got two units together in one building, basically, under one roof. These would all be, um, that was kind of the original intent, original thought when we submitted the grant application. But, um, I feel like our housing felt like there was a high. But I feel like our housing felt like there is a higher demand for single-family housing for all families, not just elders. Elders can apply as well. But that, so those lots, that would just be like, you know, my neighbor doesn't cross my property line, you know? That, and that's kinda your space, so it's individual homes. We, uh, Tom told me he's got six housing plans, that he's, uh, I don't know if he's presented it to the BC yet. If you guys got him, okay. Si- six, six housing plans, just six plans that, uh... Yeah, just to try to mix up the neighborhood, so it's not the same. We, he basically builds the same, not, correct me if I'm wrong, but basically builds the same Nahaza house over and over, and we don't want one whole neighborhood of the same house. So, we're trying to mix it up, make it nice.
Different square footage, also, we need to increase and decrease costs, so all these housing costs are the same?
Possibly, that, I, well, some of them, he might, he might be able to mirror the plan, change the roof line to where the, the footprint is the same, same exact square footage. But, um, yeah, that's, there's an art to that. We're gonna try to, to make it as fair as possible for all the families that'll be renting these and in the future. But we want to try to set this up to where it's successful, everybody's happy with it, and everybody else wants more. And we can go get another ten million dollar project funded next time, build as many houses as we can with that.
Does the tribe own the Ray property?
Yes, they closed on it a few months ago. So, they're, like I said, most of it's not developable, it's actually eighty acres. So, we've got about ten acres there along Future Farmer Road that we can build for this project.
So, again, that's negating here. This is just a handful of houses. How is this gonna benefit all of our tribal members? Why are we putting this money into a business that brings money back into our people that can be spread out throughout our entire tribe?
And just to kinda elaborate on that a little bit more, we've got to bring people here. You know, there's no housing around here, housing is a big problem on every level. Right, right, but that's just the start. We've got to bring people here first, and then we're gonna build the businesses, bring in the revenue, and then it's a cycle. So, we've gotta start somewhere, and housing is a major problem around here. So, this is just another level of a type of housing that we're looking for. We're also looking into, you know, fair market value apartments and a feasibility study. So, you know, multiple options for multiple people. And yes, it might not be a straight payout to each tribal member, you know, as far as like a benefit goes. But in the end, we will see the reward. Well, it's just, you know, it's just another option out there. Whoa, too many questions.
Could these be handicapped up, available, accessible?
We can look into that, I do know that we do have some ADA housing in our elder housing currently. But that is always an option.
So, let's say a family stays in that home for fifteen years. So, after that fifteen years, and that house becomes available for them to own outright, do they get to own it after that? Or do they have to pay for it all over again?
And that's another option we're talking about, is how to issue out these houses. And one of them would be like a rent-to-own, or you can actually look into what they call sweat equity, where you can actually assist in building the house, and that would go to part of it, too. So, that, as far as issuing it out and how people would get it and the criteria, all of that's still gotta be worked out, but we've gotta get the homes built first.
Okay, so is this money on top of the original grant that we had to build houses there, or is this totally different? So, that's four million dollars in there, correct?
About four point three million total, yes.
So, then you could actually build forty houses instead of twenty?
Possible, yeah, if we can get our costs down. I'm not the, the construction cost guy.
Are we looking at, to like make these houses like Inland Camp?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Pahaska, Inland Camp, villages?
It's a great idea, but he hasn't presented that to us.
Yeah, we're still, still pretty early in the design stage, so. Any more questions? Looks like Billy's got one.
So, have we done an actual census to see what our people need and how many are needing housing? Since we're focusing on housing, I'm just wondering what the demand is.
There is a level of people that are being missed. You've got those who are living in poverty, and you've got those who are living very wealthy, and then you've got the ones in the middle who can't get any assistance. That's a need, and that's where most of our people are at. And this is just one of those options, to be able to give them housing, to be able to help them. You know, if you make above whatever the income level is, this is an option for you. So, I mean, this isn't the works, it's going to happen. It just depends whether we use our ARPA money, or if we just end up using the nation's money.
We're trying to get the bang for the buck.
How about the people that already owns their land, though, that needs houses?
That's Nahasa. That's the Nahasa one that just talked about right before here.
I mean, I think, I mean, this helps out the tribe tremendously, don't get me wrong. But the people who already own places that have houses should come before something like this.
Well, I don't agree with that, because there are people that need homes, that don't have homes, that can't get homes, and this is the answer to that, I agree with.
The people who have, yes, they need help, I agree one hundred percent. But there's people out there on the streets, there's people who can't get help, this is for those guys. They need help, just as much as you need help, but they don't have a place to live. You have a place over your head.
There's, there's a lot of housing options through these grant programs. We can design a completely different project, owner occupied. I'd love to do one where we could do a, basically, down payment assistance type program, or, or heavily subsidized housing, if we built a hundred or two hundred thousand dollar home, so it'd a lot cheaper than the development costs. There's, there's a lot of stuff we could do, acquisition rehab, or just owner occupied rehab, kinda like what Jackie was talking about. But that seems, apparently, has been very limited in recent years on what homes, what people actually apply. So, I think we just need to build up those housing programs, and to get these projects funded in the future, there's, there's a lot of those programs we could do to, to leverage more funding through grants.
So, Kelly stated that, uh, this is gonna happen, whether it was, whether we use the ARPA funds or the general funds. With that being said, you know, instead of doing these fifteen, this fifteen-year program, I don't know the guidelines that you guys have got to adhere to, or the, you know, the parameters you gotta stay within to make, to get these grants and stuff. But, you know, Peoria Housing has been very successful in, in their growth, on, on their housing for income-based, income-based families, tribal, tribal preference, Peoria tribal preference, and then tribal, regular tribal preference after that. I mean, is, is this, is this gonna be similar to that, or is this, or is that out of the question? I mean, because the Peoria housing pro, the Peoria housings, they generate income for the tribe yearly. And they also help out the tribal members and other neighboring tribal members. You know, is, is this, is this, does this have the potential to, to go in that direction? Or you guys set on this whole fifteen-year, then you can buy it?
We are restricted on this particular project to, the, to, the two point three million dollars that we received in 2020. Pretty much have to stick with this project, or just give the money back. And if we give the money back, we're not gonna get any more. That's, yeah, that's gonna be a big black eye for us, that, when it's that competitive, only one percent of us were funded. And that's been the case year after year, and they've increased the maximum amount. So, back when we applied for this, we could apply for five million dollars, now it's up to seven and a half million. So, they're, they're funding fewer and fewer projects. So, we've gotta make sure we hit the nail on the head with this one, and follow through with what we said we would do. And then, the next project, we can design from scratch, and whatever the needs are that we determine at that time, hopefully, within the next couple of years, I, I think we can build these, get it cranked up, occupied. Maybe it's right the next one in twenty-four, twenty-five, possibly. But this particular project, stuck with the, as a rental. I don't know the details on how housing's gonna do property management and rents, and we still probably need to, to follow, you know, think through a lot of the long-term impacts of this project for policies and procedures, and develop and get the rules in place before we, you know, accept the first application for these houses. But there's, there's a lot we can do with housing in the future.
I'm gonna be that guy real quick. I know we haven't really settled on the transfer of ownership part yet, but we may want to consider, in the future, some protections, because I am just concerned that we will invest all this money and all this emotion into commuting this, building this community, and then twenty years from the line, it all get bought by BlackRock, or turned into a white community.
Yeah, we can put those restrictions on now. That, those are, those are policies we really need to, to determine what the future is gonna be. If it's, uh, recorded in trust, we could still sell the house, have a community land trust, basically, in place to where the tribe retains ownership of the land. There's, there's a lot of different options we could do. But one of my previous jobs, where we did a similar project, housing development, we gave equity, when, when the homes, they expired after twenty years, the, the restrictions were lifted, so there's no strings attached by HUD anymore. And so, the way we designed it from the very, very beginning was actually required to be in the grant application for those programs. We allowed whoever was in the house at that time to receive a, um, a portion of the equity of the house based on how long they had been in it. So, if somebody stayed in the house for the full fifteen or twenty-year period, they might get fifty percent of the purchase price or value of the house. That, that's how it was designed then, which I didn't really like. But we can, we can think through a lot of those options. We could maybe even do a, a lease purchase, where somebody buys the house upfront and rents it for the next fifteen years and builds up equity, might even be able to give a house away to somebody if they've stayed there the whole fifteen years. So, there's a lot of options that we really just need to sit down and hammer out those details that, um, the BC and us and housing have.
So, is this land already in trust?
No, no, I don't believe.
Has there been an application to put it in trust?
I assume it's in fee simple, okay. I don't think there's...
How long does that take, Trenton?
How long does what take?
To take it from fee to trust?
Um, you're looking at, uh, two years, but with this project, the, it was kinda under the gun on getting a site picked for it, um, because the fund was already allocated. So, it didn't make sense to try to get a, slow up the environmental requirements for this and file a fee to trust on it, and then potentially lose the funding available for the project. So, we didn't apply for it until, and won't until construction and everything is done. Did that answer your question?
How does that work, if we can't even build the elder housing or the Wellness Center until that, those finalize, those are good for us?
I think those funds were tied different, if I'm remembering correctly. Those funds were tied different for that program, for the development of that, had to be on that type of property. Where this was already allocated, it just had to be on a piece of property, correct me if I'm wrong, that was specifically purchased for the housing side of it. And if we would've applied for fee to trust before, it would've took longer to get it into trust. These funds would've had to go back, and then we wouldn't been able to apply for them, is my understanding. So, it made more sense not to apply for a fee to trust until the construction was complete.
So, once the, so once the construction is complete, we can take a, or do the application to put it into trust then? Or does that...
That can happen, if that's the business committee's wishes.
Well, if you're, if, if we want to potentially turn it into like a village, then putting it in trust is your best option, and then that takes out somebody coming in and trying to buy out the whole neighborhood because it's been in trust. Plus, that helps your landowner, your homeowner, when it becomes their home, that that's already in trust. That helps them, benefits them financially, until the government comes in and says, we own your land, give it to trust. So, on these houses, so we rent them for fifteen years, where's the rent going?
Probably in the upkeep, if you've ever rented property, it's not pretty.
And then what happens when you have a family come in and completely destroy a house? You know what I mean? Because we all, I mean, it happens, that's just the reality of, of rental property, is people will not take care of it, and they will just destroy it. So, then what happens then? I mean, there's a lot of things that I think need to be, I think this is great, I really do, because I think that we need housing. But I think there's a lot of things that still need to be thought through and processed, and it may be a better game plan for the next time you apply for this grant, or...
Just as a back history, and I don't wanna really go into too many details, but the original plan was to have these homes placed inside the city of Quapaw. And it didn't happen, and we had to end up making a decision, getting land, so we wouldn't lose the funding for future. So, yeah, it, it has not been a smooth process, we're just trying to see it through to the end. But you are right, you nailed it, there's a lot of stuff we need to work through it.
The twenty acre, or twenty...
If you're twenty acres and you're putting ten houses, or ten acres and you're putting twenty...
Ten acres, twenty lots.
Per house for twenty houses.
On average, not, be slightly smaller with the infrastructure. So, then it'd be about a third of a lot, or a third of an acre per lot. I, I think they're, what they have proposed is about eighty-five to ninety feet wide. And some options might be maybe up to a hundred...
And the reason that lot size was proposed is because there have been other nations who have done the same thing, and put a house on an acre or two acres of land, and then all you see is just up to the porch mode, and it gets a little crazy. So, it was, you know, kinda also thinking for people in the future to help them with lawn maintenance, making it look, you know, presentable, and not just getting out of hand. And to try to get ten more houses later as well, keep building onto this when we can get another grant. So, that was the, the idea behind the lot size.
So, with these being rented properties, you're, is the maintenance gonna come in and mow that, or who's gonna come in and mow that?
Hasn't been worked out, but I would say probably more than likely, they're gonna be rental properties.
Right.
Yes, there are challenges. The thing is, we went down this road already with our emergency housing, and we had to shut it down because the people were just trashing it. And when, when you give them a free place to live for a year, and then you tell them their time is up, they trash the place because they get ticked off that their time is up. And when you have rental, this is what you're gonna deal with, so, you know. I think it would be a lot different if it was, if they could buy them. But if we rent them out for fifteen years, I'll bet you fifteen years down the road, they're not gonna be worth renting out again.
Well, they already stated that it is a possibility they could do rent-to-own, so, I mean...
It won't take fifteen years, you know. If you guys were around to see our emergency housing, that was a perfect example of how people treat something that they're not working for. for, and they're, you know, not making that house payment. And they, yeah, exactly. So there is a lot to work out. I really, not on board for rental. Well, I'm not making a blanket statement, but you know what? It's proven, you know, so, okay.
Michelle, Bound and Food Sovereignty, the next one.
We have one more question.
Oh, sorry.
So, is there gonna be restrictions on those individuals who are applying, or families who are applying for housing, and they have a past they're not happy about, or they've, you know, a certain past, and they've changed, or doing better for themselves, or family, their community? Is that gonna keep them from getting a home, or applying for a home?
Yeah, it's just, it's another item that needs to be worked there, because we hope not, right? We good? Can you hear me?
Hello, everybody. My name is Michelle Bound. I am Director of Food Sovereignty. This is actually a new program. This is something that I've been working towards for about four years, and we're finally at the point of, I'm ready to kinda take it up a notch and show you all what kinda stuff we can do. I'm gonna probably read a few things off of my sheets, but then I'll also kinda give you visuals here, too. Let y'all know that the Quapaw Nation defines food sovereignty as the right of native peoples to retain their cultural identity and reserve fundamental rights, including the right to produce food granted in treaties and other legal documents. It's the process of decolonizing the local food system to recreate a sustainable system that maximizes self-reliance through farm-to-table initiatives. For community food systems to be both sovereign and sustainable, all community members must have access to both nutritious and culturally appropriate foods. The community should also be able to supplement their own foods through sustainable gardening, farming, hunting, or fishing, and be fairly compensated for their harvest. Quapaw Nation has been addressing tribal food sovereignty for nearly a decade by restoring agricultural initiatives at the tribe level. In 2018, the Quapaw Nation conducted a thorough food sovereignty assessment. Seven key ideas and issues emerged from this assessment. One of them is that we found the need to set up a Quapaw Nation Food Distribution Center, or Food Bank. We need to build more greenhouses to extend our growing season. We need to start a farmers' market in Quapaw. We need to open a Quapaw grocery store or general store. Increase community awareness and availability of resources. Start a community seed library, and reduce diet-related illnesses. The Quapaw Nation currently owns and operates the Quapaw Farmers Market and Food Hub, that opened in 2018 and 2021, respectively. The Quapaw Farmers Market is much more than a retail outlet. Its mission is to increase community access to affordable and nutritious foods by promoting farm-to-table initiatives, education, and business opportunities for local producers. Educational activities at the Quapaw Farmers Market include food preservation tutorials, children's coloring books, fact sheets, social media content, and more. One of the biggest challenges for the Quapaw Farmers Market is the lack of reliable produce vendors to ensure consistent supply of fresh food at the Quapaw Farmers Market. Food Sovereignty Department staff maintains the garden specifically dedicated for growing produce to sell at the Quapaw Farmers Market. The garden has been successful thus far, but noticeably lacks fruit plants. Oh, there we go. Are we at the second one? So, see, some of these are in our strategic direction. We wanna grow crops for the community. Really, what I'd like to do is expand and do an orchard. Part of that, in my plan, will be adding fruit trees and berry bushes over the course of the next five years. The Farmers Market Garden expansion, the one on the picture on the right, is actually our current market garden, and we've acquired more land where we can actually expand it tremendously. Like I said, we do community education, classes on gardening, food preservation, preparing traditional foods, seed saving, conservation, and food donations. We wanna improve the health outcomes, of course. We did develop a kids' garden a couple of years ago, and then we are looking at developing community garden with the new housing project that they were just speaking of. We've got a medicine and healing garden that I'm working with the Family Services, that they're actually gonna take over that and maintain it, but we're all gonna get together and get culturally appropriate foods and medicines to go in there. So, in order to build tribal food sovereignty, we need to build our agricultural workforce for long-term employment, and we need a transition to sustainable practices. Solar power, vermiculture, water conservation, natural fertilizers, companion and succession planting, cover crops, agroforests, gene composting. We also need to work on expanding our income streams. Of course, right now, we have the Farmers Market and Food Hub. Some of the things that I'd like to do with that would be to expand it, and be able to get more staples in there, and make it more into like a grocery store, or a general store. I'd like to expand into agritourism. I'd like to be able to provide, you know, kids' corn maze and pumpkin patch. And eventually, once we get our orchard up and running, we could even do, like, apple ciders and things like that. You can also do pick-your-own berries, berry patch, too, for agritourism. We also can expand our seed and plant sales. Currently, we are licensed a nursery dealer, so we can sell our live plants. We can get on to be a licensed seed dealer eventually in the future, when we find it, we are big enough to do that. We also acquired some, the beehives from downstream, and I'm working on expanding our apiary. We can also do a study for feasibility for value-added products. There's a lot of products out there that we can use, that'll be offset from some of the products that we produce. Right here is the property development. On the left side is what we call the Welch Property. It was recently acquired. It is off of Whitebird and Fifty Road, so if you see north and south, that's Whitebird, east and west. Right here, what we're gonna do is, we're going to actually expand into row, row gardening for actual vegetable production. We are going to clear out some of it and do our fruits and berry bushes throughout as well. I'm gonna make sure that we do a lot of companion planting, because the main thing is that we wanna kinda reduce our outputs, or our inputs, I'm sorry, to increase our outputs. But basically, I'd like to reduce our uses of fertilizers, try to do a lot more drip irrigation to conserve our water. But throughout that development, we also have a sixty-by-sixty-four-foot building that we're gonna need to do to store our equipment, store our, you know, backup jars and canning supplies. We also are gonna put a wash-and-pack house in there, so we can actually process the vegetables properly and safely. And then, we're looking at maybe possibly expanding, or moving the Farmers Market over there. That, of course, is not included in the million that I am proposing, but I do want you to know that that is our future, where we're going with expanded income streams. But we're also gonna do kind of a walking area, and then we'll have a pavilion out there, too, that'll have a water feature. We actually got a grant for that, that will, that was with the Clean Water Act. So, it'll be a really nice setting area. Try to make it comfortable for everybody, have it as a gathering place, places that where we can teach people on harvesting and stuff like that. And the location on the right is the Ray Property, the one that they were just talking about, the housing. The east side over there is actually an undermined area, so the housing will not go there, don't worry. So, we're gonna have to utilize it with something else. We're gonna actually expand our apiary out there, and provide a wildflower habitat. And then, where it's, where the trees are back in the back, we're actually gonna clear some of those out, and plant native fruit trees, and such as native fruits and nuts, pecans, cherries, persimmons, pawpaws, things like that.
Have they been cleaned, or cleaned, so that the vegetation that grows off of it is not contaminated?
Yes. They have, they have already remediated that over there. And so, like, I don't know that there's any mining on that. Oh, no, there was, because it was undermined. So, yes, the environmental has remediated that. On this front property, the left property, we're actually gonna have to go in, because there were two exploratory mines that were bored, and so they will have to clean those trees out of that front, but I will revegetate all of that with fruit trees and stuff. And this is a breakdown, basically, of where the money's gonna go. The majority of it, as you can see, is in employment. And then, the second majority of it is gonna be the walk-and-wash-and-pack station. Like I said, that'll be a sixty-by-sixty-four building, and that'll include the build-out, such as, you know, utilities, concrete, roadway, all of that stuff. So, any questions?
And one of the things, one of her missions here, and she's currently working on, is a, I don't know what I wanna call it, a farm-to-table food box. And we've got to start somewhere, but the idea is to come up with our own food boxes for our people to hand out quarterly. We've gotta start somewhere.
Oh, I think this is a fabulous idea.
Oh, I was just gonna, I was just elaborating a little bit more on, like, because I know that question was probably gonna come, but that's just like, one of the projects, is to be able to grow our own food, raise our own animals, and be able to get that to our people. Good, healthy food, not processed food.
My big, I think this is a wonderful idea. I think this is great. But my biggest question is, don't you have grants to pay for your salaries?
At the current moment, we are, have closed out all of the grants, and we will be continuing, that's the non-stop for us, constantly looking for grants. So if we have a grant come up, that can be applied to any of this stuff, it most certainly will be. But at the moment, all of the grants that we have are closed out.
Why do you have employees if you don't have any money to pay?
It's being paid out of general fund at the moment. General fund at the moment. We were covered under grants prior to this, but we do not have any current grants at the moment.
Why?
Well, I, I just recently hired someone that will be actually, a main focus of hers will be, to be able to develop those grants for us.
Michelle, I love your work, and I love what you're doing. And I think we should give her the money for whatever she needs, because I think our tribe needs to focus on becoming more self-sufficient and self-sustainable, along with Mitch Albright's department, on our cattle company. I think, I think I have the utmost faith in Mitchell. I think he's, his heart's in the right place for the tribe. I think we need to give him whatever he asks for, as long as, you know, along, you know, what goes along with cattle company, and keeping it growing, and keeping our herd growing, and processing, and distributing, and selling that meat, and helping other tribal members. So, I just wanna thank you for all your hard work. And Mitchell, you do a great job, too.
Thanks, Ben. But yes, my ultimate goal is to make sure that nobody goes hungry, because I don't think that that should ever happen anywhere in a developed country that we are in, especially a tribe that can take care of our people, and that's our main goal. I'm working on it. I am. I'm constantly, I'm... A lot of these costs are gonna be initial costs. So, you know, like I said, the main thing, obviously, a salary will be just one year, for the staff that I have, but like, the initial cost, I'm gonna be getting equipment and things like that, that'll be used for multiple years. So, a lot of this stuff is just really basically startup. Each year, the only thing that I'm gonna probably have to do is, you know, your soil, or, you know, and if we expand our compost, we'll be able to use that in our gardens. Soil, seeds, occasional plants and things like that, that we wanna add, stuff like that.
Okay, I'm still stuck on the grants thing. So, so, here's my concern. We had grants, we no longer have them. Why do we no longer have them? For whatever reason, but now we're gonna give more money to something that has already not been self-sufficient. How long have you...
I've been working towards this for four years. This is, this is actually, this is the first year that we've developed this actual department. Before, I was kind of absorbed into the cattle company and Quapaw services, and things like that. So, this is the first time we're actually starting this department. I don't believe so. I just happened to be the one that said, "I want it." I plan on making a lot of money on it, too.
You know, at one point in time, our greenhouses supplied fresh produce and vegetables to downstream, and our coffee, coffee roasting facility supplied coffee, cut the cost of coffee in half from that particular vendor. Cattle company provide meat to the casinos, our own meat. We kept that money in-house. That's one way to fund, that's one way to gain funding for your department, is to go back to that. And that's one way to gain more funding for Mitchell's department, is to go back to that. Supply that meat, you know, we should supply our own stuff, you know. If we got it, we should sell it to ourselves. Keep that money in-house.
Agreed.
You may have already touched on this, I stepped out for a minute, but are we doing any, or do you have any plans of doing any vertical farming?
I actually do quite a bit of trellising and vertical farming. Like I said, this here on the right was what we were doing currently, in a much smaller area. Like I said, I really take, plan on taking this department and just growing it. There's plenty of opportunities for us to be able to sell. Like I said, we can, we can possibly get it back into our Title VI program. We can get it into our daycares. We can get it, hopefully, into restaurants, and any surplus that we have. There's a lot of programs right now that say, like the Wine Dots did, that they have to buy direct from the producer, as far as doing their food box donations. And they could even, we could even be set up to where they can come purchase from us. You'll find that here in Oklahoma, the biggest problem is that a lot of the farmland is used for animal feed versus actual vegetable production for human consumption direct. So that's kind of where I'm pushing this, to where we're actually doing more of full vegetable production.
I just know it takes a lot less area to grow.
Yes, absolutely. I plan on getting as much as I can, and as much bang for my buck as I can, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep. Sweet. Thank you, guys.
Next up, Ottawa County Rural Water District.
Good evening. I'm Rick Gideon. I'm a Quapaw Nation member. I'm Chairman of the Board for Ottawa County Rural District, Water District. I've got Vice Chairman Ted Bearden here. There's probably a lot of people know him from over at the Indian Health Service, as a pharmacist and stuff. He's gonna be presenting for us.
All right, thank you, Rick. Let's see, let me get it on this. Okay. Can anybody see that in the back?
No.
Okay, so I'll just tell you what it says as we go, all right? So, the reason I'm here tonight, out of a very, yes, that's, that's better. I'm here tonight out of a serious health concern. That will certainly involve some of your tribal members, and I base that statement based on the fact that, after I got on, after I volunteered for the water, for the Water District Board of Directors, in about 2012, about three years later, we had a visit from the, from the Indian Health Service Engineer there in Miami, and he told me that IHS had dug thirteen wells over on 645 Road there. It's a mile west of Cave Springs Ranch there, if you know about where that is. They went back a year or two later, and they did sampling on those wells. Out of those thirteen wells, most of which were Quapaw tribal members, five of those wells had become contaminated with lead. Two, in two of those wells, the water was so toxic, they told those people to, "Don't let your dogs drink it." So, IHS said, "We will provide the funding if you all will extend a water line over there." So we tied on the one that was there. So we tied on the one that was there by Cave Springs Ranch, and we ran a water line over there. As you know, dealing with the federal government is like watching paint dry. It took three years for them to come up with the funding, with all the environmental studies and all the stuff that they had to do. But we got that done. But the first thing that popped into my mind, and as Rick said, I did 35 years in the healthcare field. I know what lead does, especially the kids. And we had those Quapaw tribal members there with some of them with kids, some of them with grandkids, that were drinking that water. I thought about, what about these other hundred, over 100 homes up in the northeast part of the county that's not served by any water district? All of those people are using water out of shallow residential wells that are either now contaminated, or all it takes is one good earthquake, and they'll all be contaminated. And nobody knows if those wells are contaminated or not. So what occurred to me was, what we need to do as a water district is we need to put in water lines, and we need to push water up to that area to make clean water available to those people, so they can stop using, you know, like I said, those wells that are either now contaminated or will become contaminated at some point in the future. All it takes is for that well casing to crack, and you can get lead in that water. And if you don't know what lead does to people, you can ask me when we get to the question part of this. So, we set about trying to figure out, how do we work up in that area? Because that's out of the legal jurisdiction of our water district. If you drew a line from the Spring River, straight through the town of Peoria to the Missouri Line, south to Highway 60, that's our water district. The part of that up in the northeast part of the county is not served by any water district. But we wanted to work up there. We found out that you have to get approval by the county commissioners, and so we did that. Rick and I went up there and talked to them. And then you've got to get approval by the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, and so we did that. And so then we got to looking at it, and there's about 60 miles of county road up there that we would need to run water lines through there. And it costs somewhere between $100,000 and $150,000 a mile to put in six-inch water line. So that's approximately $6 million. So that's an issue to be addressed down the road. But the engineers tell us that what we've got to have before we can ever think about putting water up in that part of the county is a bigger, is a bigger water storage tank. Okay, the current one that we've got was designed to serve 110 homes. Right now, we've got 467 homes on that water tank. And it's simply too little to develop the pressure to push water to those extra 100 homes up in there, between the town of Peoria and the Kansas Line. Now, how many of those people are Quapaw tribal members? I know that question's coming, so I'm gonna... Okay, in the southern part of the district, down there, we have surveyed those people. Half the homes we serve are Native American homes. 50% own the money, are Native American homes. Of those, about 5% of those are Quapaws. But that area down there, we, our district covers the original Eastern Shawnee Reservation, the Modoc Reservation, and a big part of the Wyandots. Okay, the preponderance of tribal members down there, as you would expect, are Eastern Shawnee and Quapaw, I mean, Eastern Shawnee and, what'd I say, Modoc and Wyandot. So I would expect that in that part of the county up there, we'll see a higher percentage, higher percentage up there of Quapaw tribal members. I don't know, because that's not part of our district yet. We've got clearance to work up there. We've not done any work there yet. But when we start, we will do surveys to find out how many of those people are tribal members of every tribe. And so we expect, I'd say my best guess is at least 10% of those 100 homes up in there will be members of the Quapaw tribe. So that's only 10 homes, but do you want 10 homes to be drinking toxic water? Just one home up in there is too much. So this is the problem that we need to fix to try to get rid of this exposure to lead through drinking water. So what we need to do that, the engineers tell us that we need a storage, it's a stand pipe, it's a water storage tank. That's, instead of a 100,000 gallon like we got now, we need one three times that big. At the elevation that our tank sits at the well site, our current tank is 100 feet high. Only the top 30 feet of that tank is what develops the pressure. So they say that what we need is a 300,000 gallon tank, and that will take care of our, the whole area that we'll have to serve. So how much does that cost? The estimated cost as of this last spring was $1.2 million for that tank. The Indian Health Services got $368,000. So that, so that means that the water district is on the hook for around $800,000. When your only source of income is selling water to 467 homes at an average monthly water bill of about 40 bucks, if we borrowed the money to pay for our part of that, it's gonna take us forever to pay for that. And we've got a lot of other issues that the other tribes are already helping us with. The Wyandots have agreed to pay for all the hardware that we're having to put in the ground to locate leaks. And we're, as a result of them helping us, we're reducing our water loss dramatically so that we'll have more water in the system to be able to serve that area. The Eastern Shawnee, just out of their general funds, kicking in a quarter million dollars to help us with another aspect of it. The Modocs have been in, I guess, a little bit of a political turmoil there. I hadn't been able to talk to them yet, but I intend to. Because they've got the Buffalo Ranch over there, and they use about 90,000 gallons a month out of the system, so they need to help us, too. So I will be on their doorstep. But what I'm asking you all to do is to, to consider helping us with your ARPA money, so that we can build that bigger storage tank over there, so that when we get the lines in the ground, we can push water that far. The engineers tell us it doesn't do you any good to put the lines in the ground now, because you can't use them. You don't have a big enough storage tank. We've gotta do the storage tank first, then we can put the lines in the ground. The EPA, I attended a meeting in Oklahoma City about this very subject, trying to tell somebody that that part of our county is right across the Spring River from an EPA Superfund site. There's over 100 homes up in there. Nobody knows whether those people have got contaminated, have got contaminated water or not. I would almost guarantee you there's some up in there, based on the project that I mentioned earlier. It's called the David Sappington Project, by the way, is what that one was called. Some of you might know David Sappington. And there was a whole bunch of other, of your fellow tribal members right along that road that we served with that project. So I'm just saying, I expect there'll be a lot more of them up in there. So we're asking for your help in acquiring that tank. I'll stop right there and answer any questions. I don't think I followed my... I guess I did. I'll just step over here and get a drink of water, if you don't mind.
So, who gave, so the Shawnees are giving you $325,000?
No, the Wyandot Nation.
Are the Wyandots?
They're, they're buying the valves and the meters, pressure-reducing valves, air-release valves, that should have been put in the system to begin with. Our system was put in the ground in 1976 on a shoestring budget, and they used very few shut-off valves. They used no pressure-relief valves. I can explain to you what all that does. They put in, out of the whole system, there's like seven shut-off valves, and you're supposed to have one every mile. We got 68 miles in line. So what they're doing is they're buying all those valves, so we can bring the system up to the department and then, in our environmental quality specs. Oh, I'm sorry. As you can see, I'm very passionate about this, this topic, because it's been so frustrating trying to get some help to solve this problem, because I know there's contaminated wells up in there, and I can't bring anybody's attention. Huh?
So for the five Quapaw homes that you say you service, you want $800,000?
No, I'm saying this area up in there, at least 10% of those 100 homes will be Quapaw Nation homes. Huh?
It's probably more like 30%.
Okay. See, because, and I didn't know that. Thank you for that.
What is Ottawa County putting into this project?
Huh?
What is Ottawa County putting into this project? Other than all of the tribes around, what is Ottawa County putting into the project? What are you guys spending to help them?
We went to Ottawa County. The very first place I went to was Ottawa County. And so I asked them for $285,000 to fix our water loss problem, so we'd have the water volume to push water up in that area. This is before the engineers told us we needed the bigger tank, all right? And so they approved my $285,000 request. It went all the way to the state auditor's office. It got approved. It came back down and went through the Grand Gateway. They handled the actual disbursement of the funds. And so, you might recall about two years ago, some of the prisoners in the Ottawa County Jail decided they ought to have a bonfire in there. And so they got a bunch of mattresses and set them on fire, and they smoked up the inside of the jail. So they had to move all the prisoners out of there. They housed them down in Tulsa County for about a year, I think, while they refurbished the jail. Huh?
So you didn't get the money?
We didn't get the money. It went to Ottawa, it went to Tulsa County to pay for them housing our prisoners. So...
And so EPA said they wouldn't help?
The EPA has set aside $1.2 million for water lines. They're depending upon the district to be able to get our system up in shape to be able to use those water lines.
So you want, so are the Quapaw tribal members that you're gonna be servicing, are they gonna be getting free water, or are you gonna be charging them for the water?
Under the law, we're not allowed to give anybody free, free water.
Are they gonna get discounted rate on their?
82 of the Oklahoma...
They gonna get a discounted rate on their water, then?
According to the law, everybody gets treated the same.
So then you're gonna ask us to pay for something, and then you're still gonna charge the people who are part of the people that are paying for this?
Yes. It's very cheap water. It's very cheap water. Huh? But as, as far as we know, okay, let me tell you about our water. We have had the water at the wellhead tested. Can I answer your question? We have had the water at the wellhead tested by the Department of Environmental Quality. Water coming out of that well is as pure as bottled water. It's those residential wells that Indian Health Service dug that have become contaminated. It's, our, our water comes out of the Rubidu Aquifer, which is underground about 1,200 feet. It's not contaminated. So what we're wanting to do is to send clean water up to those people up there and get them off those wells.
Sir, I got a question. What was your name again?
Okay, my name is Ted Bearden.
And what is your title with the Ottawa County Rural Water District?
I'm the vice chairman.
The vice chairman. My name is Ben Waters. It's nice to meet you. I think if it was up to me, I would give you the money you're requesting. But have, have your engineers taken into consideration this, these proposed buildings, these new houses, that they're, the tribes? Oh, it's a different water district?
Okay, did you hear me when I, when I described to you where our current water district is?
No, I missed that part.
It's on the east side of Spring. It's on the east side of the Spring. If you, if you drew a line from the Spring River right through the town of Peoria to the Missouri Line, south of that to Highway 60.
Okay. So my, my question is, everybody needs clean, clean water, and lead-contaminated water is horrible for children. So with you being the vice chairman, would you be open to the idea, perhaps? No, I don't expect you, I mean, realistically, you can't give away free water or discounted water to tribal members. But for this particular project, or any, any project that entails, you know, with, with you putting in water lines, could, would you be open to the idea of possibly giving temporary employment to tribal members to work on these projects?
Yes. All of these projects are put out for bid. I mean, we will have to bid all these out. And if there's any Quapaw tribal members that, that, that have their water license, that have, have their water operator license, and have the equipment to do the job, you're welcome to bid on these projects.
I'm, I'm not talking about bidding, I'm not talking about a, a contract for, for the job. I'm just talking about labor hands in general.
We currently have a contract with an operator, who, he does all of our line work for us.
But could you?
The, the water district is too little to have employees. Everything we do is contracted out, because we don't have the money to pay for the, you know, unemployment insurance and sick leave and all that kind of stuff.
But could you, could you?
Or the equipment.
Could you maybe put a stipulation on your contract? You're like, when I worked at QSA, we encouraged our contractors to hire, to hire tribal members to work for them. You know, whether, whether they worked out and they got hired on full-time, or if it was just for that specific project. You know, ultimately, we did encourage, and we did ask these contractors to employ tribal members for these jobs, these different building projects, you know, that, that we had. Is that, that's what I'm getting at? Is that something that you have the power to, to, to ask your contractor to do?
We certainly can. In fact, when we, when we start to put in the lines up there, he's gonna have to hire some help. He, he will have to hire some help. And so, you know, we will tell him that the Quapaws gave us .8 million of their ARPA money, and so we need to consider, you know, employing their tribal members.
Fantastic, man. That is great.
Right here, the guys that's over there in Water District, Darren Poncho Key. I know them really well.
Oh, really? You know Poncho and Darren?
They're really close to our family.
Okay.
They're a family-owned business. Everybody works for them, and they're family.
Well, not necessarily true, but...
95% of them are family.
Darren, the other day, me and him was talking about this, and he is looking for qualified help. He's got some big projects coming up. We've got a project over here, take Highway 10 south toward Grove on 130 Road. There's a two-mile project that he's just now starting on it. State's getting ready to pay for Highway 10C, that five-mile stretch. We've gotta move all of our water line there. And, you know, we've got some big contracts coming up, or big projects.
So why don't you guys provide that out?
Well, we have to bid all that out. We're... Every bit of it. And now, back to where he was asking about the free water and meters and stuff. It, I know it wasn't you. Any tribal member, no matter what tribe, can go right over here to Miami to Indian Health Services. No, they will pay, they will pay to run water line and set a meter at your property. Okay, I, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Can we please speak into the microphone, so people on Zoom can understand what you're saying? Thank you.
I, I understand what you're saying, but we don't make any money off of this. We are volunteers. The whole, every board member that's on our board is volunteers. We don't make a dime off of it. Every bit of the money that is brought in by bills goes right back into... Every bit of the money that is brought in by bills goes right back into the water system. It's, it's a very, maintaining a water system is a very expensive deal. The members. When, when you get a, okay, I bought a new house last year, new to me. When I, I done a transfer fee and then I transferred the membership of that property to me. And that, I'm a member of that. So it's, all the members own it. Sort of like, yeah.
I live here, so I don't have that.
No, no one makes any money off of it though because every bit of the money that comes in goes right back into the water district. How's that possible? Have you ever maintained a water system? It's not cheap. When I got on the board, the people that was over it before me and Mr. Bearden, uh, they had three-hundred-and-seven-thousand in the bank. I think right now we're down to over, under a hundred thousand in the bank to maintain, just maintaining this system. Do you remember what it cost when that pump went out?
It's a thirty-thousand-dollar pump. In the summer of twenty-twelve, that pump went out twice just because that was a drought year and we overworked that pump and it went out twice. And so that year we were out sixty-thousand dollars just replacing the pump. That's a thousand feet down in the ground. It's extremely expensive. Uh, to put in water line, you're looking at a hundred, hundred thousand, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a mile depending on how much rock you run into. So it's...
Any other questions? Got one over here.
Just a comment. I think we should give them the money if you're going to employ tribal members.
Thank you. I just wanted to, is anybody else on?
Just you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to thank you because water is a very precious thing to everyone. We are a sovereign nation, so why shouldn't we be, uh, involved with this? So again, I thank you for your efforts.
Okay. There's a question right here, ma'am.
I was just wondering if it was cheaper to dig wells for these people? It just, wouldn't it be cheaper just to dig them a well?
Well, there's already wells out there. They're contaminated wells. They're bad wells. The water ain't fit to drink. When did you have it tested last?
Can you go deeper? Like, and just go into a different water source?
We, we was talking to, uh, we, he mentioned the EPA, the Indian Health Service, north of Peoria, uh, about a mile north. Was there ten or thirteen homes there?
Mile north of Peoria?
Yeah. Okay. I think there's, uh, about ten or fifteen homes there. And then if you go all the way up under I-44, on the north side of I-44, just before the Kansas line, I think there's, uh, fifteen or twenty homes there that they did test and all of them came back bad. The federal EPA is funding and funneling in a million dollars through IHS, Indian Health Services, for us to put the water lines in up there. But our biggest problem right now is we don't have enough tire to push it up there. And, you know, I know it don't benefit every tribal member, but it benefits the reservation to have that fresh water up there for whoever lives up there.
Water is important.
Thank you for considering our projects.
I was, I was going to answer her question there. She said, uh, something about digging wells. To dig a well into the aquifer, the average cost of that right now is one-point-six-million dollars, by the way. So... Well, yeah. You also have to get, to go that deep, you have to have a depart, uh, have to have a permit from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, which is, which is hard to get. But, uh, you said that you've got a, a good, good well and a lot of them are, are good. But up in that part of, up in that area up there, a lot of those wells are old. It just, all it takes is a crack in that casing for that to become contaminated with lead. What could cause those cracks? Earthquakes. The one we had three years ago in the fall, or was it four, shook my whole house. We had water lines that broke. Underground water lines broke as a result of that earthquake. So what we're doing is here, we're hoping, we're hoping we don't have a worse earthquake because if we do, all those wells could go bad. We're trying to get our system up to where we can run water lines to those people so it doesn't matter about earthquakes. Okay? So with that all hushed.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, gentlemen, uh, for taking time out to present your project to us. And I especially want to thank you, Mr. Bearden, for your, uh, service to IHS those fourteen years, fifteen years?
About thirty-five.
Thirty-five years, but as head, though.
Yes, I was the head of it for fourteen.
Fourteen years, okay. There we go. That's right. I remember that. I don't remember that. So next up, we have Tiny Homes, Mr. Michael Allen.
Okay, very, thank you. How does this damn thing work? This is forward, they're back? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am the last presentation for this evening, so I would ask for your continued patience. I am here on behalf of Linda Davis, who is in California for mandatory training with one of the programs that we'll be talking about today. I believe Linda is on Zoom, so she might be able to participate. If you have any specific programmatic questions, I'm in the grants department. I help Linda write some of these grants and I help her assemble some of the metrics that are presented to the, uh, business committee. I would ask that you look at the title that Linda has given to her proposed project. I hope I don't ruin this. Tueta Ogapa, which means my Ogapa home. Uh, this was selected by Linda to move away from the stigma that's associated with being in a shelter to a more nurturing description and have both potential clients and the general public think of Tiny Homes as one of the steps in the healing process. Uh, in order to understand the project, I'd like to just do a little brief overview. Uh, the domestic violence program that is based in the Family Services Department was begun in twenty-sixteen when Linda was hired with a grant from the Violence Against Women's Act that was under the Department of Justice. It began with seventy-five thousand dollars and has six, and has since, excuse me, and has since expanded to one-point-four-million dollars with three grants, two from the Office on Violence for Women and the FIPSA, which is the Family Violence Prevention Services Act. These funds are complimentary. Most of the funds come from OVW and what Linda cannot cover with OVW because the funding is quite restricted, she's able to use FIPSA. And the, in the fourth bullet point, I'd like to point out that McGirt, the government actually asked the Kwapaw Nation to participate, uh, in a special initiative that was limited to, uh, tribes in Oklahoma. And this was a result of our, our, the Kwapaw Nations' expanding jurisdiction and a reestablishment of its rights. Uh, with regard to, oh, I'm missing some stuff here. Okay, beneficiaries and services. As you all know, domestic violence is pervasive in the United States and it's particularly disproportionate amongst tribal nations. Native American women are twice as likely to be subject to some form of violence. And based on the statistics that Linda has gathered over the course of the last four years, the ratio of women to men who are seeking services is nine to one. The DVU, the Domestic Violence Unit, which I'm referring to, uh, does not carry out its responsibilities in isolation, but is part of the justice team that is based in the Kehota Center. So this involves courts, marshals, counseling services. To reinforce, uh, the need for this domestic violence unit, here are some graphs based on statistics that Linda has gathered over the course of the past four years. You can see that fifty-three percent and sixty percent for the two funding sources are Native Americans. Now, this follows the trend nationally where Native Americans are more likely to be involved in domestic violence than other societies. In, uh, Ottawa County, sixty-three-point-nine percent of Ottawa residents are white and yet we have fifty-three percent Native Americans who are seeking these services. Nineteen-point-eight percent in Ottawa County fully identify as Native Americans and yet you can see the percentage who are seeking services is very high compared to other groups. These are some of the services that Linda's program under the Family Services Department offers. They're quite varied. I've included this graph here to show that housing is of particular need for those who are seeking assistance. Let's see, the rent subsidy is thirty-three percent of the funds that Linda is expending for her clients. And of course, a lot of this includes children as well. It's not just the women, but there are children involved as well. Uh, the DVU, the Domestic Violence Unit, is averaging one-hundred-and-twenty-eight clients per month this year. And at the current rate, we have seventy-seven open cases. We do have funding restrictions versus critical needs. Funding from the three grants is restricted. Construction is not permitted. Program is growing, but temporary shelters, I'm using the word shelter here, uh, that is safe and secure and within easy reach of family services is needed. Men are clients, even though they're a very low proportion. In the three-state region, the nearest men's shelter is in Joplin and the nearest men's shelter in the state of Oklahoma is in Bartlesville. So need to address this domestic violence here within the Kwapaw jurisdiction is very high. As I said before, OVW and FIPSA do not permit any of the funds to be used for construction. Now, having said that, right here, not just a mile or so down the road, we have the location, the infrastructure, the expertise to build tiny homes that will offer safety and security to those who are in need for temporary shelter. Now, when I use temporary, I'm not using it in the HUD sense, which is up to two years. We're talking very temporary, one to two weeks and at the maximum thirty days, which at, after thirty days, Linda and her team will assess if the family needs to stay longer. One of the conditions that will be applied, should this project go forward, is that after thirty days, there will be a reevaluation. And if the family needs to stay, they can so long as they show that they have made a concerted effort to find more permanent housing. Because you want a fairly large turnover for those who are coming in. This is where the proposed site is. Everyone, I'm sure, is probably familiar with the former FEMA houses that are next to the elder housing in the cul-de-sac there. This is what is being suggested for the location of four tiny homes and another one that would serve as a satellite office for Linda and her team so they can make sure that safety and security and counseling is provided to those people who are offered assistance. Six, I'm sorry. A VC member just corrected me. Six. Five and one for the office. Only one, most of these trailers have been removed. In case you've been, not been there recently, only one is remaining. This location is ideal because it offers privacy and control in terms of who can come in. And we, you know, when you're a victim of violence, you need to be secure. You may, need to make sure that whoever the victimizer was does not suddenly appear. Now, as envisioned, if constructed, these tiny homes or tiny home village will be part of a shelter network with the Wyandotte and Eastern Shawnee Tribal Nations. Linda is in constant contact with these folks. And so when once Kwapaw, uh, clients are taken care of, if there is an open house and Wyandotte's is full, uh, we can take care of that person or persons for a short period of time. So it's strengthening inter-tribal relations by providing domestic violence care. Here is a proposed, just, is it just a tentative floor plan and what a building might look like? So you can see it's much different than what most people would envision as a, a temporary shelter. The costs that are here were provided by Tom Stell, the Housing Director. They're not by any means final, but I believe on the agenda it's shown is at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, a quarter of a million dollars. The estimates are very rough and as you probably all know, construction costs have gone up considerably, so some allowance must be made, I would imagine, for when it, if it's approved and goes forward, if there, any costs have gone up. Now, in summary... Domestic violence is going to continue, uh, the unit is going to continue to expand as more tribal and community members respond to the availability of services. Now, when I use the word community members, I mean even those who are not native. This is federal funds, so all those who come to Linda must be given due consideration. There can be no favoritism in this. But as you saw from the statistics that I showed earlier, most clients who come are of Native American ancestry. The program as envisioned will cement relationships with other tribes and the cost is minimal compared to the social return on investment. Now, social return on investment is a very precise term that is used by academics and social scientists. I'm not using it in that sense. What I'm using it as is to describe the long-term intangible benefits that will result from the project. Quarter of a million dollars is a reasonable price to pay for investing in familial well-being of the community, both Kwapaw and the greater community. I will answer your questions if I can. Uh, I think Linda is on Zoom, so if there's something that I can answer based on the presentation, please go forward.
Hi, Linda. It's Abby. I love you and I want to say I am so embarrassed that you have to have this presentation and why our nation is not making this possible without it being brought here. I think that this is something that should be desperately taken care of regardless of where the funding comes from. So, that's all I've got to say.
I got nothing to say because you have nothing to say. I'm just in awe. I think this is wonderful. And is there any way that maybe the tribe can match this money?
And is there any way that maybe the tribe can match this money to give them a little bit more leeway? Because years ago, when I worked for Osage Nation, over 20 years ago, we developed our own shelter. We were actually the first tribal shelter in the United States was Osage Nation. And I don't, and I know that, I don't understand why we're not doing more to help these people. Is there any way that the, I mean, he shouldn't be up there asking us for this money. This is, I agree with Abby, it's embarrassing.
I can't speak for the whole board, but as a majority, I know we're all in favor of this. This is something that can be covered by ARPA. That's why it was brought to all of you. You know, crunching numbers came up with no more than, you know, 240, 250 at the max with the secure gate. Like he was saying, the structure cannot be paid for through grants, but the grants can sustain this program. Right. No, I'm just explaining why it was brought to all of you guys, though, is because that it is an acceptable expense through ARPA, so it was just thrown on the list with everybody else. But just like the housing, it needs to happen regardless. It's just, but this is a great town hall meeting to be able to get your guys' input and know what direction the nation needs to go. So I just want to thank all of you for that.
To be able to develop more homes than just these five? Well, that's right there by the marshal's office.
Well, we have discussed as far as patrolling with the marshals, but over at the Kehota Center, that area is being developed more for like family services, for example. So we're getting ready to go after our next grant, which is, I always mess up the acronyms.
ICDBG.
ICDBG. Anyway, it's Community Building Grant. Yes. So that right there is going to go towards a family service building, and it needs to be placed over there by the Kehota building. So a lot of these projects also rely on the location of where current services are.
That family services building will also include a temporary shelter for such as ICW.
Yeah, speaking of life.
I apologize. That family services building will also include a Is it not on? Okay, sorry, again. That family services building will also include a temporary shelter for families that need privacy for court cases and things of that nature. But it wasn't designed, or the preliminary design did not include for the domestic violence. So we did try to take into account some form of shelter and security for families, particularly visitation.
Do we not own another piece of land that is bigger than that little?
Well, the reason, I believe the reason was it's secure, it's private. There's also infrastructure there already. There's electricity and there's water.
So then it wouldn't take near as long to get it up and going.
And in the elder housing, if there's a vacancy that can be occupied by marshals who would pay the going rate, and you would have right nearby to those tiny homes police, marshals available to answer any emergency. Any other question, any other questions? Okay. Thank you for sticking around for this last presentation.
So thank you, Michael, again for your presentation and for all of the presenters here this evening. There's been a lot of lively discussion, and we're approaching 8:20. If you have the energy to stick around, I'm game. If there's anybody else that has anything, any ideas they'd like to bring forward, I would love to hear about it. I want to open up the floor to everyone, have that opportunity for them to say something. Yes, please.
Would you mind going back to the first slide that talked about the money that we were originally funded? Can we go back to that? Yeah, it's right when we first started. It showed how much we were allocated and then how it was dispersed. My question is respectfully to the business committee, because I, I don't hear everything that, you know, you guys vote on and but even my uncle here, one of the elders of your tribe, I had asked him, he doesn't want me to bring I had asked him when we sat down, I showed him that and I said, "When was this discussed?" And just respectfully, I'm just throwing that out there. Did we all know that the tribe received 52 million? And that the money was allocated to these, these that you presented here? Was there ever a vote for that? I guess my curiosity is because we're down to 10 million to dispense here tonight? And I think every one of these should be, they're all good. There's no denying that. But I'm just curious why we're down to 10 million when we had 52 million? And who voted that, see, I don't even know what premium pay for employees means. And I don't know what assistance payments means. And did the tribe get to vote on that? Or did we just get the check and then the committee decides, "We're going to give it to this, we're going to give it to this, and then we'll figure out what we're going to do with 10." I think that's a question, I don't know if everybody else wonders that, if I'm the only one. But I do know that a lot of people that don't live in this area, which I do not, that's a question that we always discuss as a family, is like, how did that money get? How did they decide to use that money? So I'm just respectfully asking, how was that decided? Another reason I ask is because I'm sure everyone in here has friends or family members who are on other tribal roles, just as I have in my family. And one of the ladies in our family is on the Comanche tribe. She received 35,000 the first of the year. Everyone on that tribe, not everyone got 35,000, but it was allocated to be spent to better their homes. So renters got a different amount of money, homeowners got a different amount of money. But there are probably 25,000 members on the Comanche tribe? Well, that's a lot of, I mean, that's a lot of money. So that kind of brings another question. I guess when the American Relief Project dispenses the money, they're giving different amounts to each tribe since, okay.
Allocated based on citizenship as well as land base.
Okay, I expected that. But, so that does answer that one question, because that was, that was quite a bit. And they still have 100 million in their account today, and that's not hearsay, that's factual. So to see that we were allocated 52 million, I'm, I'm just asking, how did we decide to spend all of that?
So initially, when ARPA came down, as Secretary Treasurer mentioned in our opening remarks, we did have a town hall meeting. And in that meeting, there was a lot of ideas that we prior, that we then prioritized. Some, we were able to initiate, and then others, we hit roadblocks, challenges. And keep in mind, this was during the time that the guidelines had yet to be finalized. So during the course of a year, within, I'm not going to say every monthly business committee meeting, but there was several business committee meetings where these were brought up. They were voted on by the business committee. And then some were talked about within our tribal government, within, you know, directors, the administration side, as to what we could utilize those funds for and what would be best going forward. So that's kind of how the process took place.
Pretty much everybody in here was aware that that's how it was voted on? That's just me being just a tribal member, not participating here? I, I wasn't aware of it. And I know he wasn't, and being an elder, I would, I would have thought, when I showed him this, I said, "Were you aware? Or do you know what this was spent on?" And he didn't know. So I just felt like that was a concern and a legitimate question to ask, just respectfully. And I, I was under the impression that the ARP funds would be given to the tribe, to benefit the tribe. Instead of, because I don't know what premium pay for employees means, or revenue loss replacement. I don't know what all those mean. That, that's just what I wanted to bring to the table.
Thank you. So if we can go down through there, the assistant payments are what each individual tribal member received. So that's elders, that's adults, and then that's minors. And we recently just did our latest, what I would call tranche, of that allocation. And I think that opened up November 1. And that is part of that, and then there were other previous to that under the assistant payments. So that, that's for all individual tribal members. The revenue loss replacement was specific to tribal government. And specifically, if we could, within our business enterprises, show and reflect revenue loss, then that was money that could be allocated towards that, which we were able to do. When, you know, in the face of COVID, economic downturn, when our enterprises were affected and impacted, that's what that money went for. Within the technology expenses, we had a, I'm trying to think here, we had a significant purchase to update our technology within the tribal government that would help our citizens, all members. So as an example, what, what that end result looks like is when you go to apply for your latest round of ARPA funds, or if you're applying for your $50 gift card for, for your minor or anybody you have guardianship over, that web, I guess, there's an opportunity to where if you go out onto the web, you can apply and upload that digitally. So that is something that is still being worked on. And again, I apologize, I'm not an IT person. I'm giving you the layman's version of it. But the ability to have that across the board, not just with ARPA funding requests or Christmas funding requests, but every single program and service that we have to apply for, we're looking to have that model now, and it's because of that investment with that technology. So that's, that's one. Pension plan contribution is exactly what it, what it states. That is for Department of Public Safety, specifically FIRE and EMS. And what that is, is a plan. And it needed seed money. So that's, that's the 5.5 million. That's correct. And the reason for that is because that was like the, I don't want to call it a guinea pig project, but it was the, like the prototype, to see how it would work, if it would work. And it's also to retain. Well, it's also to retain and attract employee talent, to make us not just competitive within this area, but to be the leader in public safety when it comes to that kind of stuff. And I, I think it's going to work. I've seen the modeling. And that's something that we would also like to look at for our entire employee base, is a pension plan like that. The premium pay for employees, that was an incentive specific to employees only. So what that is, is it fosters and it encourages attendance within our employee, our employee base. And so, you know, with, with, in the, in the face of COVID, whenever we came back from remote work, you know, it was an encouraging, I guess, incentive for the employees to have perfect attendance, essentially. And so those that did have perfect attendance and those that showed up on time were incentivized. And that overlaps or, I guess, flows into the ability for us to continue services and continue our programs efficiently for everyone.
Joseph, which employees does that fall under that category? Right here, Linda.
I'm sorry.
Which employees does that cover?
All of them. All of our tribal governmental employees that administer tribal programs and services.
So, like I said, my children work for the tribe, so my children benefit from this. But, so when this money is gone, and I understand that it's been extended until I believe September of next year. So in September of next year, you now have employees that are used to receiving this $800 extra a month, if they come to work every day and do their job. So at the end of September, we're going to, nope, we're not going to give you that extra money? I mean, have you guys thought about that?
Oh, yeah.
Because this is some, that's a substantial loss to, to their, it's a bonus.
I think it's a substantial gain.
Well, I'm saying if, if it's not able, I mean, if, if it just drops away, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it will. It will drop away.
Setting these people, and granted, most people should budget, and the more money you make, the more money you spend. Everybody knows that. Or at least in my checkbook, that's how it works. And so, if I had an extra $800 a month, ideally, I wouldn't spend it, but we all do. Everybody does it. So when this goes away, what then happens to our employees?
It does, it will go away. And I think it goes to your comment earlier on grant funding, generally. Under the idea of grants, they're, they're never meant to be permanent. It's on, it's on us to continue to go after those grants. And if we've, which we have created an expectation of an extra, so then it's going to be incumbent upon the business committee to continue to go after additional funding and additional revenue streams.
Other tribes did it as just an increase and not as an ARPA, because this equals to $10,000 a year. Other tribes just increased their salaries, which made them competitive, which we are not. And you guys said you're working on that.
Yeah, we're gonna have to come up with more money. Yeah. So again, internship program, that is a program within our higher education department. And that is meant not, I believe, the way that it was explained to us was, there is a fair amount of adult learning component, too, for rehabilitation to homes. But then also, there is that other higher education component for like, school age children, or, excuse me, college age children, and to get them into the pipeline for our workforce. And then the consulting expenses, technical assistance, those were also, like, anytime you have, like, say, such as a technology expense, then the pension play, pension plan, excuse me, because, because those are, I guess, outsourced or contracted, that's where that expense also comes in, to facilitate and provide the tribe any technical assistance that we may have encountered, such as the ability to, on the IT side, I'm going to butcher it, but like, to wire a certain thing, or to provide the compatibility to a certain device, or program, or software, things of that nature. So that is it, in a nutshell, of those expenses.
I've got a, excuse me, I've got a quick question on that note. The $52 million that was received, just doing the quick math on it, if you were to split it up by the total number of tribal members, just in general, we're talking about 10,000 and some change per tribal member, if it was not gone through each expense. And I'm not saying that there are not things that need to be paid for. Granted, there probably are a lot of things that are needed to be paid for in those expense bylines. But is there any possible way that there could be an independent audit done to see where every single one of those dollars were spent for all tribal members, to be able to see, both digitally and hard copy on paper?
So just as a part of our governmental operation, all of our enterprises are audited annually. So it will be part of the audit. But then also, I believe it's a quarterly report that we have to submit to Department of Treasury anyway. So once that's expensed, well, every quarter, we're having to turn that anyway. So, yeah, we can provide that, not a problem.
That'd be fantastic.
Thank you.
Okay. I just have, I just, and this is some snarky, just so you know, right off the bat. So, this town hall, you had everybody come in here to tell us, under the guise, to get our opinion. But really, you had us to come here to tell us what you're going to spend the money on. Where's the input from us? Beyond hearing the presentations and then asking questions at that point? Where's our actual input?
Okay. What would have happened theoretically if we had never received this $52 million? Would we be looking at a screen like this right now? Would the Kwapaw Nation be still carrying on? I guess my point is, is I'm looking at a lot of numbers, that I understand what they're for, how they're accounted for, and it's very good. And all that's left is $10,000, $10 million, and we're expected to give our input on $10 million. Is that correct?
There's $10 million left of ARPA. The purpose of the meeting is to get your input and recommendations, and to share any ideas that you may have.
Okay, my suggestion that I thought about to help every tribal member was generators, because of cold weather, the ice. Well, I'm sorry, I wouldn't, you know, I would take care of my family. Well, I apologize. That was my suggestion, whether it be gas, or battery powered, enough to run a refrigerator, and some of them are portable, but that was just my suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you for your input.
All of the things that you guys have presented is really important. And we don't have enough funds to cover all that. But I was thinking that we needed to benefit all of our people. And I think that we should open up a casket business, you know? We're all gonna die sometime. Sorry, I'm talking about revenue here. I, you know, I just think that we should try and apply that last $10 million into something that's going to make us more money. You know, I want to get our casinos paid off. And once we pay off our casinos, it's, it just opens up the world to us. Then we could do every one of these programs, and then some, if we could just get out of debt. So, that's just my opinion. I think we should have some type of business that we could bring in revenue to our people. That way, I know my relatives in Montana would benefit. Just saying.
Thank you.
Also, a casket company, I mean, not a casket company, but a casket company would, you could make it out of cedar, you could put your materials inside, you know, Native American design, you could go and, you could go to the, to tribes, other tribes, reservations, and you could market it at a cheaper price than what you pay from the regular mortuaries. And you could, I mean, it would be a business, and it would be something you could do in the future. Also, I know the Shawnee tribe is giving out cellars, storm cellars, with part of theirs. A $6,000 storm cellar, whether it's a walk-in, or an in-ground one, that's something that all tribal members could benefit, especially in this area right here.
Thank you, Jerry.
I also, not with this $10,000, but, I mean, $10 million, because it sounds like you've already got good things for it to go towards. But I was thinking, the recycling services that we already have going on, is to expand that. Because Wes Davis runs Red Cedar in Miami, and he's already been to intertribal, and pitched what he wants to do to expand that, to buy plastic chippers, and just expand all of that. So that's something that I would like to see the tribe invest in, in the future.
Just out of curiosity, where does the Kwapaw tribe take all their waste?
I knew you were gonna ask that. I asked that this morning, and I haven't got an answer yet.
Like, yeah, like trash services?
There's only, there's only like, two in the county.
Does Republic front all the trash cans and dumpsters? Okay, so they're out of state, in Kansas, you said? Okay, just an idea, I don't know if anybody's thought about this, and maybe they have thought about this, but a waste and roll-off can business, where you are dropping 20, 30, and 40-yard roll-off dumpsters, and/or residential cans, and doing that in-tribe, in-house, instead of contracting that out to a service to come haul the trash, you pay the fee by the tonnage, or by the weight, to dump all the trash and disposals. But instead of paying their fee to not only use their cans, and their services, and their gas to haul the equipment, you start a business with that $10 million, where you front the money to buy the vehicles, and the cans upfront, through the Kwapaw business, and you use that to, to make money for the tribe off of those roll-off services, outside of just the tribal nation itself, in Ottawa County, as a roll-off dumpster business. And I know you could buy a lot of vehicles, and a lot of roll-off dumpsters, just to get the initial fee started. And it's a very profitable business, because waste is going to do nothing but increase, and keep on keeping on, because people are going to throw things away every single day for the rest of eternity. Has that ever been thought of, or discussed, or just, I'm just curious, I think it might be a great idea for the tribe.
I don't think as far as starting our own business, but, yeah, I don't think it's been talked about, at least since I've been on.
Yeah, I mean, the only, I mean, where I got that idea is, I've even kicked the tires on that with my own family, with trying to think about starting a waste, roll-off management business, where you're not collecting the trash, you are just transferring the trash, and transferring the waste. And you're just talking about equipment and dumpsters, and whenever they get dirty, you're cleaning them, and re-spraying them with paint, and keeping them running.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna go back around and be done with this, because I am, definitely don't want to step on toes, we're family, we're friends, kinda, know each other. But just growing up, a lot of times, money gets, becomes an issue, and that's a lot of money. And when we start deciding as a tribe, how we're going to spend $52 million, and then when I just ask in general, how many in here voted, can you just raise your hand? Who voted to spend it this way? Did anybody vote? There's not one person in here that's raised their hand. And I think that's a concern, that even before you were business committee members, even before you, Joseph, I think all these years growing up, you see money come out like that, and then we're sitting here like this, and I ask you, who voted to spend that money that way? And not one hand in here has gone up. There's where my concern is. It's transparent, that's where it went. But what if we wanted to spend $52 million amongst the people in this room? Or our elders, who have probably, many of them have passed away, and never received anything, that they've waited on, thinking they were going to get their whole life? And they've passed and had nothing. So that's my, I'm just coming back around to address that. I realize this is already spent. But I personally, I am disappointed that it was spent that way, and no one in here even voted on it. But...
I just want to also emphasize, one of the main reasons for this meeting, right here, was to get tribal member feedback. Prior to this, the BC has been set up, and by our governing law, to make the best decisions on behalf of the nation. We've got a new, you know, a good new, fresh board up here, and we want to hear the Kwapaw Nation people's opinions. We know we're on the firing range, we know we make people mad, and we can't make them happy, but we're just doing our best foot forward, trying to turn a new page, let all of your voices be heard, because there are some great ideas in this room that none of us even thought of. And the last time we had a meeting, it was kind of silent. So we wanted to come forward with this meeting with some ideas, talking points. What do you guys want to do? We don't have to do all of these, it's just a starting point. We also know that people want another distribution, too, it's also on the list. But it's just us trying to do better, as a board, for you guys. No, it wasn't taken to general counsel, it didn't need to be, but it should have been. That's where we're trying to get back to. So, you know, our apologies for not doing this sooner, but we're trying to make up for it now. And so, that's all I have to say about that. Well, I hope we don't come into more COVID times, to where we have to get $52 million either. And this is, this is new, for all of us. This was, you know, dropped in our laps, and said, here, this is supposed to help you, make it work. And so that's what we tried to do, and then we're trying to do what is best needed for the nation going forward. So, thank you.
All right, I just, this is Michael Whitecrow, one of your IT agents here. I just want to point out that this came out after COVID. And there's a lot of things we have developed over the years, that have enabled this meeting to even happen, the way it is now. Yes, the tribe as a whole, and the people in this room, did not get to vote on everything that happened here. We did get to vote in the BC over the years, and we've had a lot of change of membership through there. So a lot of these people, they, even though we have elected them now, they didn't get to choose. I don't even believe Joseph got to choose everything on there. So, I know it's frustrating, but even if we decided to send this to the BC during COVID, that would have knocked out all the elders, they would not have been able to participate. So, everyone on this board, and I know everyone in the team here, in the IT team, have been working hard to make it so our ability to communicate is getting better and better. So, I know it's frustrating, and this is just a lesson we're learning as a tribe. We went through a time where we could not gather as a big party. And we're also growing in a time where we're allowing more and more people have a voice that cannot be present at these meetings all the time. So keep that in mind, when we're dealing with this frustration. We do want more input. Their actions have proven it. So, just so little of that thought, when we're discussing this.
So, just out of curiosity, when does the actual decision get made on how to spend the $10 million? So, just out of curiosity, when does the actual decision get made on how to spend the ten million?
Funds have to be obligated, excuse me, funds must be obligated, am I saying that right? Funds must be obligated by 2024 and they must be spent by 2026. Is it currently in a bank account where it accrues interest or is it in a bank account that does not accrue interest? Rena?
It's in a bank account.
So, does it accrue interest? Low, low interest. And it can't be used for investment?
Or pay off debt.
Or pay off debt. So in two years, it'll basically be maybe close to twelve million dollars? I don't know.
Are we gonna vote on this in the end? All tribal members? How are we gonna decide?
What I had mentioned at the very beginning of, of the meeting was this notion of a survey. Because there are obviously a lot of people on Zoom, not here, present to be able to, you know, do something like a vote, but at least to obtain direct written feedback. And we'll include, you know, I've made notes, obviously, of the six ideas that were described this evening, as well as a number of other ideas that are included. Some of which, we're gonna have to look to see if they really would be ARPA-eligible or not. But to include on the survey those ideas that are brought forward that are indeed ARPA-eligible, right? Because these are great ideas. I just don't know if all of them suit the guidelines. So, survey.
So, where are the guidelines? Is it something we can view?
Sure, yeah. If you Google it-
Five hundred pages?
Four hundred and thirty-two pages of fun. And honestly, the way I get to it, I don't print it because that would be a waste of paper. It's easy to Google it and it pops right up and then there's a pretty decent index. Not perfect, but it'll kind of point you to the right sections.
You lost me at four hundred pages.
Do, do others have additional ideas that they wanted to bring forward?
Okay, my ten-year-old spent two hours working on this last night and I promised him I would read it. He kind of fell asleep after school and I couldn't wake him up, so. My name is Nolan Briscoe and I would like to request that an outdoor basketball court be built on the north side of the park on the corner of Main and Fourth Street and that swings be added. The reasons why are, one, not all kids have money to buy a gym pass or have parents that have the time to take them and then stay at the gym with them. Two, there are no places in town for older kids to go. The park is more for little kids right now and we don't have in Kwapaw any congregate areas for children. Building it there would make it more accessible to more kids who have to walk or ride. Although he did apologize to all his uncles on the maintenance department that might lose a little parking in this situation. So, he's sorry. He thinks that the basketball court should have the following. It should be a junior high size, which is seventy-four feet by forty-two feet. Have two goals, a fence to prevent all the Kwapaw stray dogs from coming on the court and to keep their balls from going out in the highway. And have lights for nights like this when it's still warm enough to play, but it is too dark. And we tried to make a list of expenses, but do you guys know there's like five million ways to make an outdoor basketball court with all sorts of stuff? So the best he came up with was that it would be between ten thousand and thirty thousand if we wanted to get super fancy with like Kwapaw designs and this special cushy stuff, I don't know. And the swings would cost up to three thousand. He went with the higher estimate because he thinks we should also include an adaptive swing, which is like a molded seat for children who have physical disabilities and can't sit up in just the, I think it's called like a belt-style swing. So, that's Nolan's presentation. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Billy. Uh, yes, Ms. Gracie has her hand up.
I for one would just like to say, Gungnir Gay, for the town hall meeting, it was very informational, needless to say. But this is the more kind of activity we need to have, so we know what's going on. We are Oga'pa. We are descendants of the many people who went before us. We have kids coming behind us. So, whatever our choices are and thoughts are, it's for the betterment of the people. And we can do this. We will do it.
Yeah, appreciate that. Gracie, thank you for your comments. What is that beeping? It's Uncle Bill's bedtime. I, I'm, I'm gonna say, I think I should probably do some closing remarks, but I don't want to cut anybody off. If you, Austin, you look like you want to say something. Okay, okay. Again, nothing has been, nothing has been decided in terms of, you know, specific where to put these funds, the remaining funds. And as Secretary of Treasury pointed out, there, there will be a survey sent out. I think it's vital just to get everybody's opinion and feedback for that. And really not just with ARPA funding, but where we go as a strategic plan for the next five, ten, twenty years, if you will. So, this, this has been a really good exercise, in my opinion. Because like Grace said, you know, it gives us the opportunity to hear from one another and to meet as Oga'pa people. And I think that's important, this community aspect of it. So we may be doing more of these. Because I like this forum. And, you know, with the monthly business committee meetings, you know, we're, we're kind of limited to that agenda. But this, I, I like this. So, we may be looking at having more of these more often to, to provide feedback and to get your much-needed input on, on all of our decisions. Because that's what you elected us to do, was to hear from you. So, if nobody else has anything to say, yes, sir?
Yeah, what about a tannery? I know it was talked about before, but kind of just- I said, what about a tannery? I know it was talked about before, but it just kind of went away.
We did recently look into that and it was not cost-effective. It was actually better for us to take and ship it off.
Yeah, we're not shipping it off. We're dumping it in the ground.
Well, that, that's, that's another story, but as far as creating the business part, that has been looked into. But just so you know, that avenue was just recently looked at.
Appreciate it. And then I think just to add on to that, in terms of ARPA funds, I don't think it was an allowable expense. I think we came to the conclusion that it wouldn't work out for these restrictions. So, anything else? Any other input? Okay. Brother Joe, you want to close us out in prayer? Would you do that for me, for us?
Hello, hello, hello. Brother Joe, thank you, thank you. I mean, uh, asking body where a lot of you older live here. So I just ask you overlook me. You know, I mean, I'm still just a young man standing here. Oh, Wakanda, Wakanda, Zinki, we're not here dogging, but with equal me, Father God, Savior Jesus Christ, you, you Holy Spirits. Come to you here at the end of this town hall meeting, this discussion, to include the, the input of our tribal members from our tribal government. Just asking you to look down on each and everybody here. Their opinions, their lives, their homes, their families. Everybody who wanted to be here couldn't be here. Every member of our, our great people like that. Just ask for a clear road ahead together for the ones that come. But the things we're trying to do as a people. Ask that this, don't let this money get in the way of, of ourselves. Don't let us put this money ahead of ourselves like that, in front of our families, in front of our own ambitions. You forgive me for being so young like that. Just trying to do the best that I can like that, say a word on behalf of a people like that. Take care of them for me. Take care of each one of us where we're all far short, for ourselves, for each other. Can't thank you enough for, for being Oga'pa like that. Can't thank you enough for us being the kind of people that we are, for the way that we try to do for ourselves, for each other. Just asking you to protect us like that. I sure love you. I sure thank you for all the things that you've done. Forgive me if I didn't say enough. Forgive me if I said too little. Maybe I said too much. Take care of those things like that. Just want to say that much to you. I love you. Thank you. Amen.